I was looking for one.
Sir, someone.
Got it?
Yeah.
Oh, and so the table, yeah. All right, good.
Yeah, they've not, they've not done exactly. That was the first really.
I own too much crap.
Okay, I'm gonna want to, what are you plugging it into?
That's what I'm gonna.
Right, the basic infrastructure.
Is that the table? Yeah. Easy as that.
It usually is.
Testing one, two, three. Good morning.
Morning.
We're meeting, the Board of Trustees is meeting as a committee of the whole. And our business this morning is project risk review number sixteen. And next gen update, so Chief Audit Officer Jorgensen, if you could get us started on the risk review.
Thank you, Trustee Sewell, good morning, everybody. Thought I would start off with just a little bit of background for the benefit of our new trustees. Who have not been through a project risk review before, so I'll just give a brief overview. Since the inception of the next gen project back a number of years ago now, given that we're on number sixteen. Internal audit has done what we call project risk reviews, you'll also hear them referred to as PRRs. Where we take an independent and objective look at the project overall to see how things are going and we assess risk. And so many of our previous PRs were focused only on the platform, which was the HCM and student module. Now we're moving, now that we're moving, I'm sorry, HCM and finance module. Now that we're moving into the student phase, our project risk reviews are much more overall. We're looking at student implementation, we're looking at finance and HCM stabilization. As well as all the interconnected projects that are related to the, to the next gen project. We've been fortunate to have Mike Cullen with us for every single one of these project risk reviews. We always joke that he's like the only person that has been on this project the entire time. So we're really happy to have him here with us from Baker Tilly. And just very briefly, just kind of overall, what I want to talk about, what Mike will talk about today is, is a lot about people resources. And just making sure that we have the right people at the right time in the right roles. And making sure that we're trying to mitigate some of that risk. So with that, I will turn it over to Mike.
All right, thank you, Amy. See if the clicker will click. Maybe not. So with the project risk reviews, you know, one of the things that we want to make sure we explain. Is in this phase, the next gen student project is quite large and complex. And that's just the workday part, the software piece. And there are tons of these connected projects and initiatives, which will be either impacted by next gen student. Or impact what happens with next gen student. And so we've been showing this slide for the last few PRRs to give everyone the context of all of the work. That has to get done to make this successful. And this is important for our recommendations, as Amy said, around people resources. Given the distinct nature of these different initiatives and projects. You know, that takes a lot of people to be able to articulate what we need to get done, make sure it gets done. And then execute successfully. And so, you know, the key question. Nope, this thing doesn't. Not today. It went way far away, well, well, they get that back to the actual PRR presentation. The key question is, how is Minnesota State going to have the right people resources to be able to get all this done? Given all the priorities, the competing priorities, the skillsets and the challenges of the complexity of the project. And so as we were looking at this PRR in particular. We did want to kind of reframe how we were reporting out to the committee on risk. And so we're looking at risk across kind of three main factors, the people resources and funding, that's the resources. The timeline, right, the, the time available to actually implement and get all this work done. And then what is the scope of that work? Given that the complexity and all of the, the challenges of implementing a new student system and all these connected projects. Making sure that that's a clear scope and it's clearly defined what we're trying to do. And so as we looked at the, the risk overall. We raised the rating from high, which was the last time we presented out to the committee in March. We raised it up to critical. And really what's driving that critical risk is those people resources continue to be the main challenge. For not only getting workday platform, the HR and finance components stable. But also for the student projects, as well as those enterprise connected projects. Probably the largest one and the most impactful from a student and enrollment is the CRM. The constituent relationship management project. Because that is the beginning of the pipeline or the funnel, right, to get students into the various colleges and universities and applying. And so that's a critical connected project that will be done with functionality and a system that is not workday. It's another selected project or a product that will be selected to do that. And so because people resources is such a critical risk, that's impacting both the timeline and the scoping. Of what is in next gen, what are, what is in the connected projects. And so that continues to weigh on the challenging work in the finance world that's still going on. The work to do prototyping in student, which is the first key part of figuring out how workday will be able to support. All of the critical student processes for Minnesota State. And then those unfinished scopes that haven't been finalized around what is included in things like CRM. All of that is really being impacted by people resources, and so we raised that risk up to critical. And so to address that, we made a number of recommendations, you know, which get into the next slide. And we put those into those three risk buckets, the resource risks, the timeline risks and the scope risks. And really how we would want to, you know, emphasize for the committee is really that first column in those resource risks. Because being able to surge the people resources for workday finance. Being able to hire this, what we're calling the next gen program director or conductor role. That would help to conduct and manage all of these various activities. Engaging in the, with the third party owners rep more. And taking advantage of some of the resources that are available through workday. What's called the workday success plan, which provides resources that Minnesota State can tap into. Really, those things are the key recommendations we're making because the other two columns, those recommendations. Are really dependent on having the people in the right places to get this work done. So I will pause for questions.
Would you say again what TPOR stands for?
So that's the third party owners rep, so right now that's Campus Works. And so they are, they, the, the third party owners rep has been engaged since the beginning of next gen. It's now a different firm than the first time around with the platform, but you know, they're a helpful ally with the project team. To provide support expertise, especially given, you know, working with various vendors on the teamwork day side. And you're going to hear from them, I think, in the next section.
May I just have one follow up, Chair? And when you say more meaningfully, do you have a clearer description of what that means?
For more meaningfully, it's, it's really taking advantage of their expertise, right? They have expertise, obviously with higher ed, with, with workday, with various other vendors to really engage. They potentially have people resources, contractors that the team could tap into. We did leave that a little open because we want to make sure that that makes sense in the context of what the project team really needs. But, you know, since we initially made the recommendation, we know that the, the Campus Works team in particular has jumped in and has lots of now new ideas and ways to help engage on the project.
I'm new here, so. Yeah, we'll start with turning on the microphone. So clearly I'm not as familiar as most of the people in the room here. But I do have a question about that. The recommendation for the next gen program director, so who has been the conductor up to this point? Is there one?
There has not been a conductor in the way we've defined it. And, and really the reason is, is because going back to that first slide that had all the connected boxes. There has been people managing those various different activities, but nobody conducting the orchestra all around it. And given that there are certain people and teams at the system office in particular that are pulled in multiple directions. To have to support HR, finance, especially the IT professionals. And the fact that you have all these various projects in different phases of their lifespan, so like workday student is working and in, in progress. Where the CRM project, that's still in the proposal RFP phase, right? But all of this stuff has to come together, and so we really wanted to make sure that there was someone to conduct all of this.
If I may, Trustee Sef. Yep. When we were doing our project risk review over the summer and then this one for the fall here. When we were, especially the one that we were doing in the summer, it was really evident to us as we were talking to people from the platform side. So the HCM and finance side and from the student side. And then from all the other projects that there was kind of a lack of coordination of effort between the, the different parts of the project. And so that was a new recommendation that we made this summer, I think in August, if I'm not mistaken. And so I think you're going to hear the, some of the progress that's being made on that front.
Thank you, Chair Sewell. I just, and maybe you're going to do this later, so I'm premature in my question, but I'm looking at the first bullet point about surging people resources. Can you give us some idea of what that surge looks like in terms of numbers and in terms of cost?
So Chair Sewell and Trustee Johnson, thanks for that question. So I believe that Vice Chancellor Mackey will be coming up to the table later to talk about that. Again, with, with the finance work that's being done and trying to get through financial statement work. We just, we saw a real need for, for those kinds of resources, and I know that some hiring has taken place. But I think there's other hiring that needs to be done, so I'm going to let Vice Chancellor Mackey address that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, this is right along with Trustee Johnson's comments because I was just stuck on the word surge. How does one surge people? And there's probably a lot of ideas about that possibly. My direct question is something that, listen, this is an affective question, you probably don't have data on it. But when you say surge people resources to workday finance work, it means something to me like. Surge means, you know, like finding people that are correct fit for this work, et cetera, et cetera. We're all about people, right? We've got a huge organization with people. My, my, just off the top of your head question is this, we have state colleges and universities everywhere. We've got innumerable numbers of people working on this. Are we going to have winners and losers? Are we going to have people that are super unhappy? I'm just worried about our workforce and how this is playing out. And do you have a feel for right now, with the, put your hand on the pulse of this organization and say, are people? And I mean, if we're looking at surging people, which means either redefining their work or getting new people in. This is, this is, this is from a HR perspective, this is disruptive. And so I just wondered if you could tell us what that's, what that looks like.
Chair Sewell and Trustee Teffer, thanks for the question. Again, I'm going to let Vice Chancellor Mackey talk about that a little bit. There have been ideas that have been floated around hiring contractors for some of the work. But I do believe, and I'm not sure if this is exactly what your question is getting at, but when we're talking about surging the resources. We're looking for people who can help solve kind of the more global problems, right? Some of the larger problems that we're having with workday finance in terms of business process and things like that. So we're not talking about solving, you know, solving issues for one campus or another campus. It's really focusing on those, that overall, those overall issues that are affecting everybody.
Thanks for the update and. I think my, I have a comment more than a question. The analogy that comes to mind when we're working on these related system implementations is a building a house. And if you don't have a strong foundation, you probably shouldn't continue building the house. So to me, it would make sense to. The fact that we don't have a stable finance platform yet means we should not be moving forward on. Other critical elements of implementation. Planning student, prototyping student, that might make sense. You know, continue to, you know, develop the plan and work the plan, but we got to stabilize this finance thing. Our, our colleges and universities need financial reporting. I mean, it's sort of a fundamental that we have to get, and I know the finance team is working very hard. So how do we, how do we get there? And hopefully we'll have that discussion next.
So Chair Sewell and Trustee Johnson, thanks again for that question. I think that really gets to the heart of the matter that we were talking about with that overall risk question. Which is how do we get things stabilized while we're still working on the student phase? Because we have contractual obligations with that student phase, obviously. So again, trying to figure out how to make all those resources fit together in that puzzle, I think is going to be really key. And I think my colleagues will be talking about that next.
Thank you, Chair Sewell. Mike, as you, I know this PR is more fully encompassing, not just one area. If you were to look at just from a student perspective, wouldn't, would the rating be significantly different? Or would you still think of it in that critical space?
Yeah, thanks for the question, Trustee Hipsh. I think from, if, to Trustee Johnson's point, if, if the platform was very stable. And then we were just focused on, you know, student in and of itself. The rating would not be as high. Given that, you know, there are still people resources that the student project needs to hire and put into place. But there is a longer timeline, there is more direct. There is more direct phases of that project to allow for this critical work for planning and prototyping to happen. So, and if there were not all these other connected projects, then yes, the student would be lower in and of itself. But given the fact that it's all interconnected in such a way, it's hard to peel that piece out, especially when some of the people resources that need to support finance work and HR work are the same people that will be needed to support the student work, especially again in kind of some of those system office functions.
Thank you. I would agree that students should be a little less just because of the time, but it doesn't feel like it would be bright green. It would feel like you still have a fairly moderate level of risk, if not a high level of risk, right?
Yeah, I think that's fair.
And if I may add, Chair Soul and trustee Hipsh, I think, again, I think you'll hear my colleagues talk about student. I think a lot of the risks in the student phase right now really lie in the scope, where we're still trying to figure out, how much are we going to be able to tackle, you know, in the time period that we have? Do we have any more? One more.
One more slide, next steps. So we'll continue to be involved in, the next time we plan to come back to this committee would be in the January timeframe.
Well, that's, that's an impressive array of talent there. So the pressure's on, and I'll hand off to you, Vice Chancellor Bailey. But, you know, a lot of good questions from the trustees this morning that you folks may want to comment on in your remarks, too.
So as you can see, student is quite big. But, good morning, everyone, chair soul, chancellor, trustees. We're here to give you the update for Next Gen overall project status. If you'd next slide, please. So as I always do, I will cover for you our mission items, that they are a reminder of why we are doing this, this project. I won't go through all of these different items, but again, as we think about student, some of the pieces we continue to think about, all of them are equally as important, but I'll just highlight a couple of them. The seamless student experience, right? And so this is why we are doing this particular part of the project. And also thinking about the ways in which we pull in those systems. So we're always thinking about how we are wanting to be as common as possible, but as different as necessary. And then we also want to make sure that we're looking at that system-wide consistency from a software perspective. But these are, these are the reasons why we are doing this particular project. Can you go to the next slide? Our guiding principles, this is the, our day-to-day reminders of how we need to ensure we get past critical conversations, difficult conversations, when we get stuck, things like that, right? So the main part here, again, starting with leading practices, right? So this is a software as a service. It is a cutting-edge tool that we're moving to, away from our homegrown system. The other really important piece here is challenging the status quo. We are not rebuilding ISRS, right? I will say that one more time. We are not rebuilding ISRS. And so as we think about our business process improvement, as we think about how we really envision our students navigating through these technologies, it has to be, we have to ensure that we're not just building the status quo, right? And so we don't want just a more expensive technology, we want a more innovative technology, and one that will allow our students to move through seamlessly, through whatever experience they'd like to have with us here at Minnesota State. So I highlight those two for you primarily, but again, there are 10 of them. We use these in every single Next Gen presentation that we have to remind us, the, not only the why, but the day-to-day, what we really need to ensure that we do on behalf of all of our faculty, staff, and students. So I also, too, want to introduce to you, and thank you for the question on the Third Party Owners Rep, trustee Sharon, because we have our Third Party Owners Rep here. Liz Murphy is the CEO and Chief Evangelist, and sometimes I want to say alongside of that, Chief Rainmaker, maybe that's a new title for you. But she is with us here today. She is part of Campus Works and our new Third Party Owners Rep, again, to be that advocate for us with Team Workday as well. And as we move through the presentation, you'll hear a lot about some of those questions that you have, and hopefully, those questions will be answered as we move through the presentation. And if not, we certainly will get answers back to you. But with that, I'm going to kick it over to Nate to start us off with the actual presentation.
Yes, good morning. I'm Nate Hollinger. I'm the interim program manager for our Next Gen project. And one of the things that I think it's always helpful to underscore, and we do this with our governance groups, is a reminder of the governance structure. You heard that mentioned in the project risk review, as well as the escalation flow, which you'll see in the next slide in terms of decision-making. But what you see in front of you is actually an updated and modified version of this governance structure that really reflects the lessons that we've learned up to this point through our HCM and finance implementation, and also reflects the unique nature of the Workday Student project and this phase of our work of implementing Workday Student and all that goes along with it. Again, you heard in the project risk review, another call-out in terms of our engagement with Campus Works. And I would say, and Liz will, I imagine will speak to this as well, that part of what we've been in conversation in these past six months in our work with Campus Works as our Third Party Owners Representative, is where in this governance structure is it helpful and most appropriate for Campus Works personnel, whether it's Liz or other experts from Campus Works, to be engaged in our work, to participate in our conversations and our planning, such that they can provide us the expertise that they bring with, as I think I heard Liz say a couple weeks ago, literally hundreds of ERP implementations that they bring as part of their experience. So that's been part of the conversation and part of what you saw reflected in the project risk review. The other thing that I will mention that also came up is, at the very bottom of this ladder, is the deployment project teams. And you'll see in that timeline slide that's a little bit later, there are teams that are focused specifically on all the student functional areas. You've heard us talk about all the information technology professionals that are part of Dr. Bailey's team. But in addition, we have a dedicated team that is focused on organizational change management. So to trustee Teffer's question about the scope and scale and level of change that we are facing, we have a dedicated team that's been with us throughout our Next Gen journey, helping us think about, what does it take to change an organization of our size and complexity, to go along this journey of changing our core technologies, and really bringing all of us along on that journey? Because in the end, it's, it's yes, about the technology, but it's really about us, the people as users, and in particular, as thinking about this phase and one of our core commitments, in the end, about the seamless student experience that we want to achieve as the outcome of this, this phase of our work. So the project governance structure, again, is something that we're using, we're continuing to make sure that we are doing our level best to both communicate effectively within this structure, but also outside of the structure to all the key stakeholders, our college and university leaders, our faculty, staff, and students across the system. The other thing is, you know, communication is critical to making sure that we've got everybody equipped to make the decisions that come before these groups, as well as to advise the, whether it's the program management office, our leadership, or members of our deployment project teams. So I mentioned the word escalation. So what this represents is essentially the degree to which decisions need to be made at each level of our project teams in order for us to keep moving forward. So the percentages that you see on the left are an estimation of the total number of decisions, again, it's a rough estimate, of the total number of decisions that need to be made at each level in order for us to continue to hit our timelines and make sure that we are on track with the overall project schedule. So the key thing for me is that the deployment project teams, who are the subject matter experts, they need to be empowered and equipped to make the vast majority of configuration decisions on a day-to-day basis in order for us to move this project forward. Now, that makes sense, especially because those individuals are, again, are subject matter experts. They bring the information, information technology expertise, the expertise across our student functional areas, from financial aid, to admissions and recruiting, to curriculum, to advising, and so on. And so we need to make sure that they are, again, empowered and equipped to make those decisions to move the project forward. At the same time, in our project management documents, we've got a very clear framework for thresholds that impact our timeline, our scope, our personnel, or our resources that are required to be escalated at first to me and my colleagues from Team Workday and the project management office, and as needed, to our next levels of governance, our executive operations team, our steering committee, which has representatives from our college and university presidents and our C-suite leaders from across the system. So, and in every case, across this escalation ladder or flow that you see in front of you, we are working with our Team Workday partners. That includes personnel from Workday, as well as our implementation partner, Deloitte. So when you hear us talk about Team Workday, that includes Workday and Deloitte. So that's our escalation flow and a little bit about our governance structure. Again, just to orient us all to where we are on our Next Gen journey, this is the implementation portion of the timeline. But for many of you who have been around and have been engaged with Minnesota State, prior to 2020, 2021, you will recall that there was an extensive period of pre-planning, of information gathering, and identifying a future state, actually working with Campus Works back in 2018 and 2019, that preceded the selection and identification of Workday as our ERP partner. So in early 2021, we began that journey by implementing HR and finance. Human capital management is the Workday term for the HR functionality. So when you see that acronym, HCM, that's what that stands for. I will note that that, the early phases of that work began under pandemic operations. So the teams were working completely remotely. So that's a difference that we have the benefit of being able to work more onsite in our early phases of student. So again, we went live with HCM and finance last July, July 1 of 2024. So we are about, you know, 15 months plus into our go-live period with HCM and finance. On our student implementation, we formally launched the implementation phase in December of 2024. So we are approaching the one-year mark of being in implementation of the student phase. I'll say a little bit more about some key markers and a key transition point on our HCM and finance implementation in just a moment. But, oop, I'll go back a slide here. But now I'd like to offer an opportunity to Liz Murphy from Campus Works to provide a few remarks as our Third Party Owners Representative. So I will turn it over to you, Liz.
Thank you, Nate. It's wonderful to be. Thank you. It's wonderful to be back. We were privileged to be part of the planning stage that led you to the point where you selected Workday. I think the most important thing I can tell you is, you didn't make a bad decision. You didn't make a bad decision. Sometimes when you're in the midst of implementations like this, you wonder, did we do the right thing? I have been personally part of over 300 implementations in my 40-year career in higher ed. I've either led them, been run over by them, or guided them. And they're very, very difficult. In your situation, you have some very unique challenges. You're a very large system, and you were, as we found out in the planning phase, ahead of your time with ISRS. That centralized single solution that served all of your institutions was unheard of back in the day. And that's why you built it yourselves, because you didn't have anything, there wasn't anything that was commercially available that had the horsepower to do what you wanted to do. But over time, the technology begins to go through a dry rot, and the talent that kept that system alive wanted to retire desperately. And they couldn't, because they were the ones keeping that system alive. What you've chosen is a solution that is capable of supporting you. It's just very challenging in the environment you're operating in, because not only are you a complex system, you are a system that operates with your state government in a way that is fairly unique, in terms of how you pass money back and forth, how your employees are paid. It's different than a lot of other systems out there in, in the country. That said, there's a way to make that smoother, and I think what you're struggling with right now is a little bit of a perfect storm. You've experienced financial constraints over and above what you planned for. That obviously impacts your ability to provide human capital to address issues. You're basically asking your teams to do two jobs at the same time, and that's very challenging. And you also have a team of individuals who are using tools that they've never used before. And it's one thing to go through a process where you are, you're learning about how to use it, but in the heat of the moment, when it's time to close a month, or quarter, or year, or the first time you have to sweep, which I'm still learning about, it's different, because it doesn't work, it doesn't work the way it worked before. And even if it's better, because it's more automated, it seems harder to the person who's doing the work, right? Think about any change you make personally, even if it's a change to your exercise routine, right? When you first start that process, it's just much harder. So you have a team of individuals throughout the system and your institutions who have had cutbacks in the number of people that are doing the regular work. And then they have taken on the responsibilities and the tasks of implementation, and the parts that they are live on, using every day, are still uncomfortable to them. So it takes longer, and there's less confidence in what's happening. So the way to success here is, this is a necessary part of what you're going through relative to how you stabilize finance and HCM to provide a foundation. I do want to address some of the questions that came up, but I also want to give Bill a chance to speak as well. We'll talk about what it really means to surge resources, what is the plan for doing that. And actually, it's a plan that is designed to respect the challenges that the current staff face, and be helpful and not intrusive to them. And also, I think we should talk about platform stabilization versus timing of going forward with, with student as well. I think the most important thing to know is that this will ultimately be good for you, but it's like going through physical therapy. You have to go through a lot of sessions before you start to have the agility that you need in the new knee, you know, or the new part, whatever the new part is, right?
So what you say makes sense to me. The challenge I see that we have is, the finance and HCM system, we're implementing and HCM system were implemented, and the fallout, if you will, was all within the family. The difference with student is, we can't have fallout. We can't, we won't have 18 months to fix the problem and surge resources. So I, you know, hopefully, with your help, you'll be able to, you know, we can, as you say, stabilize, but do the kind of planning that is needed. The other challenge, I've done disastrous system implementations where we asked people to plan and do their regular work. And what you get is, you re-implement ISRS, because that's what I know, and I don't have any time, and it's due, and so that would be a caution.
Trustee Johnson.
Trustee Johnson, great point, because that would have been my commentary, the first part of your question. I think what you learn when you go through the early part of the implementation, and most institutions begin with platform or HCM Finance, because it is the foundation for then doing student billing and all the others, and financial aid and all those other things, right, is that the things that seem uncomfortable to change necessitate change. So the student team will learn, having gone through the processes, right? In the moment, it's very difficult to imagine how the process can be streamlined when you only know one way of doing it. One of the things we're going back to are the, the process redesign maps that we actually worked with you to build in advance of going forward. So you invested, as a system, in going through a process that included all of your institutions and redesigned business processes regardless of the software system, so that you have maps that then you can tweak to if there's idiosyncratic aspects of the software that needs to address, but gave people sort of, you might think this is crude, but it's like a living will. You should write a living will before you're ill. Because you're less emotionally invested, you're clearer-headed about what it is you want. When we worked with you on the process redesign, that's, that was the state of your health. People were willing to dream and say, yes, that's how I really want it to work. And yes, if you're telling me I can do it the way that's the most effective and the most efficient, this is how we want to do it. When you get into implementation, and you're feeling more sickly, so to speak, you're like, nope, we don't want to do it that way anymore. We like the way we were doing it. And so I think there's a learning that you go through. And the pain and suffering and sacrifice that's been made by the platform teams is going to benefit the student teams in the end.
Great. Thank you so much, Liz. I think you can see the expertise that Liz and her team from Campus Works are already bringing to our work, which, again, just to underscore, the pre-planning work, as we refer to it, that Liz referenced, has actually been underway, you know, since 2018 and 2019. And in addition to that, we invested in some dedicated personnel to start refreshing those future state maps that Liz was talking about almost two years ago now. And so the, the work that we sort of laid the foundation to, for the student, included revisiting those future state maps, but also, and I'll talk about this a little bit later as well, gathering an inventory of all of those additional projects that we need to account for as part of this phase of the work. So again, it's also something that came up in the project risk review. We'll shift gears just a little bit, and I will turn it over to Vice Chancellor Mackey to provide an update on the status of the overall project budget.
Chair Salt, trustees, so in front of you is the overall project budget that was amended and approved by the board in November, when at the same time, the board approved the option to move forward with Workday student implementation. So the $290.4 million budget is on track at this point of the project. It's broken into four major categories. So the HCM and Finance portion, the balance that appears to be there, the $10.3 million, that will go towards subscription costs for Workday as we go through the student implementation. The student and overall project support budgets, as was described at the time, there were a lot of lessons learned in the staffing of the platform implementation. So additional resources that were projected to be needed were built into the student budget and the overall project support budget to help with that implementation. So you can see the student budget's about 16% spent at this point, which aligns well with the timeline that was shared previously. The overall project support, which covers the platform implementation, even some of the pre-planning and the student implementation, is about right on track at about 42% being spent. The contingency, $15 million that was set aside for student, that has not been utilized yet. We did have a $15 million contingency originally that was utilized for HCM and Finance, and that was utilized primarily when the decision was made to extend the implementation timeline from July 1, 2023, to July 1, 2024. So as part of this new budget, the $15 million contingency was restored to plan, or to have available for events that come up during the student implementation that were not anticipated when the original budget was being established. So we'll continue to provide the trustees and others with an update of the overall on project budget, but again, it's on track at this point in time.
So before I turn it back over to Vice Chancellor Mackey to provide some detailed updates on the work of the finance teams, I mentioned earlier that we reached a critical point following our go-live for HCM and Finance this fall. So following go-live last year in July, we had a period of really intense support from our Team Work Day partners for the three months following that go-live, so July, August, and September of 2024. Then starting in October of 2024, as part of, you know, essentially a phased handoff to our ownership and long-term sustainment of our HCM and Finance environment and Workday, we entered the period that's called extended care. And during that period, our Team Work Day partners provides, provided, have been providing support to our HR and Finance and IT teams in a couple of specific areas. First, if there's a process or a particular part of our Workday environment that was not working as designed, and was identified as a defect that required Team Workday's partnership, that they would help us resolve those defects. In addition, as we went through that 12-month period from October of last year through September of this year, Workday provided support to our teams for the first time that they went through some of the key processes. So think around, think about things that happened during the changeover of a calendar year, and in particular, and Vice Chancellor Mackey will talk about this, the key processes related to the change from one fiscal year to the next. So as of the beginning of October of this year, we are now out of that extended care period. So that marks an important transition point to our long-term ownership and sustainment of our HCM and Finance environment. As was called out in the project risk review, Workday has provided Minnesota State at no cost some enhanced customer support through the end of December under what they call a Workday Success Plan. Normally, that's a subscription-based level of support, but they are providing that, again, to us at no cost through December. So that provides us, again, some enhanced customer support through the end of this calendar year, as, again, we work to, again, stabilize our HCM and Finance environment and really think about what it will take for us to maintain and hopefully enhance those products in the long term. With that, I will turn it back over to Vice Chancellor Mackey.
I will make sure that I try to address the surge people resources to Workday Finance work recommendation in my comments as it relates to the approach that we've been and will be taking related to the Workday Finance stabilization. So to start with, the way we've been approaching our work has been trying to look at it from a short and long-term approach. And the focus has been, over the past several months and will be for the near future, is focusing on being successful with our fiscal '25 system-wide financial statements. So on the screen in front of you and in your packet, just sharing with you the tracking mechanisms that we've had over the summer, you know, reported to the October 8th Executive Committee meeting where we were with cash reconciliation. And that was the focus for several weeks by the team that we have in place at the, at the system office in particular, as well as support from the campuses, was getting to a place where we could get our unreconciled difference down to an amount that would be not considered material at the system level for a financial statement. So we were able to get that unreconciled difference down to a little less than 1.1 million, which was through, through a lot of hard work from a lot of team members that got us to this place, which was critical. Our financial statement exit conference is two weeks from Friday for us to stay on schedule. So we have laser focus on, again, on getting our financial statements done successfully, so they can, they're ready and they can be presented to you as normal at your November board meeting. Obviously, the next several days will be important. It's contingent on a lot of different factors, whether we'll make that timeline or whether there'll be a delay. As we've been working on these short-term issues, there's been, you know, things that have been set aside or delayed a bit as far as addressing some of the long-term processes that need to be fixed, getting better and more stable data for our colleges and universities. And it's something that we acknowledge, that that is a high need, and that we hear daily, as we should, from our campuses of frustrations of not having that information available. So I'll talk a bit about the plan for that with, with our staffing. But talking about in the short term, one of the things that we did, and Liz really eloquently stated it, is trying to work with a team that's been working diligently at this for several months, is to be helpful but not intrusive, and trying to make sure that the work gets advanced. We try to keep morale the best we can under the circumstances, as well as the motivation to get to the endpoint that we need to get in the best interest of the system. And so we were able to bring in some temporary resources that had Workday experience to assist with reconciliation for a three-month period. And we're nearing the end of that third-month period. I think we're in the third, third month of it right now. It took, you know, we have just shared the budget previously, so we don't have unlimited resources. So, you know, finding where we could best utilize the resources we have available, again, be helpful for the team, and maximize the investment of those resources in advancing our work. We moved in that direction this summer, and we have seen results from that. Within our existing resources, we also have the ability to bring on additional positions that we will, we will need to get on board. We are short a couple positions within the finance area. So there are positions where there's budgeted funds for that need to be filled. And the timing to bring those on hasn't been ideal, but we'll, we'll need to get them filled very soon here, so that hopefully in January, when we're providing our next formal report, we'll have more of a fully-staffed team at that point. The, the other portion of it that we'll need to work through is determining, is there an ask, or is there a need to make sure that we're successful? That's beyond the current resources we have, that we need to ask for to reduce the risk that we have for the system and to ensure that we're successful. So you'll, you'll know definitely where, where finance is at in the short term, just based on the audited financial statements and what, what's coming in the coming weeks and months related to the formal presentation of those and our externals' auditors' opinion on those. Longer term, what we need to do is, we really need to take a step back. And Nate, if you could advance to then, to the next slide. So these are, these are four areas that we're tracking, and I know this is accounting speak. It's payroll going to the wrong cost center and not being allocated correctly. It's how we manage our grants, and then how we manage our banking relationships between the state and our local institutions and the system office. And one of the, one of the things that has been said loud and clear is that we can track this, but it's a lot of manual work to fix this. And that is not how we need to utilize Workday moving forward. So while we've been able to catch up and get things in an adequate place to move forward, and we're tracking these activities for '26 to this point, so we don't fall behind, the underlying processes resulting in us having to track this work are not, are not where they need to be. And that's where we will be working more closely with Campus Works and Team Workday and other resources to help improve those processes, and most importantly, our campus colleagues to be at the table to figure out how we move forward in a more productive way. And that work is just starting up right now, is laying out that roadmap. Our campuses want to see what that roadmap looks like. They want transparency. They want to see what the progress is related to that. And they want to see that in a similar fashion, or more interested in that and seeing what's up on your screen in tracking this manual work and fixes that had to be done for our financial statements. So one of the areas that we've really struggled with, which Campus Works has already helped us significantly just the last couple of weeks, is we know that, you know, we need to surge people resources to help Workday Finance work. That's not all within the finance area. We may need some HCM resources, some, some change management resources, some IT resources, and other resources. What we're, what we'll get help with is identifying what, what are the root causes of some of these issues, and what resources do we need to bring to the table to help us work? We've, we've struggled, as Liz mentioned, the team having to work on planning and working on the day-to-day work and helping campuses has been overwhelming. And so, so we need help drilling down and figuring out what, what questions do we need to ask? And we've had a lot of willingness of our colleagues in other divisions to help us, as well as Team Workday. And we haven't been able to know quite yet exactly what to ask for. So there's been frustration at times related to that. But we, we are, we are putting together a plan. We will advance that plan. And as, as we get through financial statements and we get into the new year, we will get to a better place. Fiscal '26 will be better than fiscal '25. And then ultimately, we need to be in a place where we can start fiscal '27, not with, not going into a strong headwind, so we can have a more stable year than we've had these first two fiscal years of Workday Finance implementation. I just want to, you know, emphasize one more issue, and trustee Tefor asked a really, really great question, is the people behind doing all of this work and the hours that are putting in, and, and how it's stretching all of them, both at the system office and at each college and university. And as we go through this process improvement, one thing that's been made really clear to me is I especially listen to my colleagues that are doing this work day-to-day, is that it's really important we find small victories along the way in doing this, because some of these processes will take months to fix. But we have to have milestones along the way where you can visibly see that we're getting better, and to celebrate those, so that everybody can see the ultimate vision of where we need to be. So that concludes my update, and I'll, I'll stand for So that concludes my update and I'll stand for any questions or comments.
I think I don't have a question. I think I have a comment. We'll see how it goes. Well, so I was thinking, how much I appreciate the candor in this presentation. I've been a trustee for a year and trying to kind of figure out all of this and it, and maybe I just wasn't paying attention before, but it does seem to me that in this presentation, you've really acknowledged the challenges that exist in a way that I can kind of take hold of and understand. And so, you know, being able to express that there is a problem is probably that really important step in solving the problem. I'm still, I think, Vice Chancellor Mackey, that I understand that there will be some additional demands beyond what we have currently budgeted for, only we don't know what those are yet. Am I, am I hearing that correctly?
Chair Sol, I'm trustee Johnson. There could be, as we work through the longer-term process. There, there's many of the activities that fit within the existing budgets, but it, it may be, there may be an additional ask from contingency funds or others to get us to the finish line. It's, it's too early to tell at this point.
So Vice Chancellor Mackey, on the, on the work that's being done and the work that needs to be done so that this doesn't repeat itself. And it's my impression that the, that the foundation, the platform is, is there and is working, but it's a matter of integrating either our business practices with the software or our software with our business practices at this point? And there's some mismatch that needs to be resolved? Is that, do I have that right?
Chair Sol, yes, that, that is a portion of it. The other one that I would mention is getting a better process in place for our relationship with the state of Minnesota related to our cash management. That will be maybe the most critical piece of resolving a lot of the issues because that in itself creates, is a root cause of a lot of other issues downstream.
So I understand, Mr. Mackey, that, that at the November meeting, we'll understand whether we have financial statements for fiscal year 25 on time or not. Is that correct at our next meeting?
Chair Sol, trustee Coles, yeah, it'll, the timing and whether or not there's a delay in our financial statements will play itself out in the next few weeks. So trustees would be made aware of that, you know, probably by the time we get to the next Executive Committee meeting prior to the board meeting.
Good, thank you. And, and at about the time of our next board meeting, a month or so from now, would that also be a moment when you would have more definition as to what a surge of resources and the emerging plan that you're developing might actually look like so that we could return to that subject and get an update a month from now? Would that be productive in terms of how far along your own thinking would be?
Chair Sol, I'm trustee Coles. We will certainly have more information to present. Some of it's going to be contingent on the progress with the short-term goals, which all come together in November. But certainly, the long-term planning is happening, so we will be able to provide a more detailed update. I, I don't know what percentage along it will be at that point. I can't predict that today, but it will definitely be moving and progressing down
Chair Sol, trustees, on the human capital management team, the focus is primarily on the implementation of contract agreements that have been ratified and approved. Most recently, the HCM team put into production the agreements reached between MMB, the state, and MAP and AFSMI. MMA goes into effect here shortly. The board also approved and took action to approve the agreement reached with Musaf. And so that will go into effect early in November and in so forth. So that, that's a focus of the team. There also, we also have some continuing issues with integrations with the state that need manual fixes. And so we, we continue to work on improvements to those integrations so that what we send to the state is reflected back to us accurately. We continue to have work with bi-weekly payroll processing and making sure that everything goes into the assigned cost center just exactly as planned and working with finance to identify any necessary changes in the security or the reporting or configuration on the HR side that better supports the work on the finance side and the general ledger and supporting operations and decision-making. And the last update I'll share with the board is the team is actually beginning to, some preliminary planning around some enhancements to Workday HCM. Most notably, we aim to configure and implement functions in Workday for performance management. And not far behind that, Workday Learning, which is an enterprise learning management system. We currently use the state of Minnesota for the enterprise learning management system in Seminole, and we would like to migrate into the Workday ecosystem. So the team is beginning to do that work. Performance Management actually has a project plan and they expect to go live as early as one year from today, October in 2026.
So just very briefly to underscore some of the discussion that we've already had about the importance of centering the student experience and the criticality of this phase of the work, as, as, you know, some of the questions pointed to. Some of the things that we think about are related to supporting a seamless student experience that also advances our key commitments, primarily Equity 2030. And some of the things that we're excited about in terms of what both the process improvement and alignment work that we're doing to think about a future state and Workday will do, but also some of the technological tools that Workday will afford us that will help, again, you know, support some of those things that we know are critical to student success. One of the forefronts of those areas is obviously perhaps, perhaps obviously, artificial intelligence tools. That has been an area of focus for Workday and one of the things that we will continue to pay attention to, to evaluate the opportunity and appropriateness of those tools. But that is one area of exciting development that has been a focus for Workday within the Workday environment as well. Just a more detailed look at what lies in front of us for the student timeline. One of the things that I will just highlight in this detailed look at our student timeline is that the implementation methodology for Workday Student differs from the implementation methodology for HCM and Finance. Importantly, it follows the student lifecycle and takes a phased approach. So when we went live for HCM and Finance, we essentially turned the switch all at once last July, July of 2024. For Workday Student, we will take a phased approach, starting in the fall of 2028, when we turn on the functionality to support admissions and recruiting. And throughout the 28, 29 academic year, we will increasingly turn on additional functions, both for new students who plan to enroll in the fall of 2029, but also for continuing students who will ultimately, in the spring of 2029, register for their fall 29 classes in Workday. So that will be a challenging year that we've already started some planning work related to that, that transitional year when we close out the 28, 29 academic year in our ISRS environment as we increasingly move more student functionality into our Workday environment so that by the fall of 2029, which is only four years away, we will be fully live in our Workday Student environment. So a lot of planning work that we've been doing over the last several months is preparing for both the work that has to happen leading up to that, but also that important consideration about where student data resides and what the source of truth is for different student data during that important transitional year of 2028, 2029. We talked earlier and was mentioned in the project, oh, sorry, excuse me.
Thank you, Chair Sol. Yeah, but looking at the, at the Gantt chart with the key pieces coming up, it looks like in Q1 F26, there's, that's kind of the, the foundation is set, you know, all key decisions are, are kind of locked there. What are the key outstanding areas that, that need to be kind of aligned on by then? And is there any insight or any help you need from the board on anything, anything in that area?
Yeah, Chair Sol, trustee Hipps. So first of all, I would say that even though that's an important moment, it's not as though the decisions are fully locked in at that point. Later this fall, and I'll talk about that in a second, you'll see that, that orange box that's the prototype review workshops. We talked about that earlier, I think, in the project risk review. That's an important moment where we've made some decisions about some core Workday functionality that then we will go out and demonstrate in a structured way to each college and university and get feedback on those initial decisions. That will inform the foundation tenant that gets built in early 2026. And through those boxes that are labeled worksets, there's an iterative approach where we design, we test, we get feedback, and then we continue to iterate and evolve. In terms of some of the large-scale decisions, I think I'll go back here. It's, I think some of those are related to, sorry, I will go forward, related to some of the critical companion projects. One of the key decisions that we've already made has to do with the customer relationship management. We actually have an RFP that is currently live that closes at the end of the month to get proposals for an enterprise-wide solution for a customer relationship management solution for admissions and recruiting. So that is one of the key decisions. I think some of the other key decisions that lie in front of us have to do with taking a Workday-first approach. And I think we still have some key analysis and communication and engagement to do around
Trustee Sol, trustee Hipps, I think when you look at this list, there are some controversial things on this list, and I want to be very transparent about that, that we have to make some decisions about. And so as we are moving towards Workday Student, and I think this whole conversation has been about making sure that we're ready for student, we have to take lessons learned from HCM and Finance. And one of the things that we learned from HCM Finance is when Workday tells us how we need to integrate, we need to follow what Workday says, how we need to integrate, and not rely on how we've done something in ISRS. And so some of these conversations about ways in which we need to do things, we don't have a choice. And it may not be comfortable, but we have to do it that way. And so I share that because if we're not listening to Workday and our third-party rep about integrations and we're not coming to the table to come up with a solution when it's time to register for students in 2030, we won't be able to register for students because we did not follow what Workday has said we need to be functional and to be configurable. And so as we look at some of this, we're going to have to have some critical conversations about are we going to be student-centered and use the product as intended, or we will have a repeat of HCM and Finance and not be able to register students if we're not listening to Workday when they say we have to configure a certain way?
So your decision is made. I mean, they, yeah.
I would just say that where you all can be incredibly helpful is that as you interact with your constituents on the campuses, encourage and support them in this time of change because they're going to express concerns. They may see at times of stress that they're going backward and not feel like they're going forward, but it will be a massive step backward if you don't go with the new prophecies that are built into the state-of-the-art system. You do have some choices. So at different points along the way, you could do it this way or you could do it that way, but the way you're doing it now may not be an option. And that's where US trustees can be really supportive as you're having, you know, interacting with your constituents at the institutions.
I promise not to be long-winded. I don't know if I promise, but I'm especially interested in the list, and this is probably premature, but my interest comes in part from some really good conversations with our student representatives. And I'm interested in the use of AI and how we are preparing students to use it in line with our academic goals. And that includes academic integrity and also just as important down the road is, or maybe before, how we prepare faculty to use artificial intelligence in their classrooms in a way that supports those goals. And so I just, I wanted to say that. I think it's probably not for now. I'm not sure how this all integrates, but it does seem to me that if we're talking about resources, there will be some need for resources tied both to student development and especially faculty development.
I'll wrap up very briefly here to some key accomplishments. I'll mention this photo is a timeline of our worksets. So that's a two-year period of activities, tasks, and responsibilities across nine different areas. That timeline ended up being nine feet tall by 25 feet wide. So as I've said to some of my colleagues and to our teams, it was gratifying and daunting. So we know the challenge in front of us, but the good news is, to extend the conductor metaphor, we've got some really talented musicians who are working with us. You heard mention in the project risk review about personnel. So we've made progress in some of these key areas listed here. I will note, and the chancellor mentioned it yesterday, that from our project status perspective, the student project itself is currently in the green status overall. However, we have some subcategories that we monitor, scope, schedule, and personnel and resources. We are yellow in our resources because we still need to bring on some key personnel. And last but not least, in front of you are just some of the key activities coming up this fall. We are wrapping up our planning activities. That planning workshop that you saw that image from was a critical part of that. And now we are moving into sharing a prototype. That is a really important moment where subject matter experts, leadership from each of our institutions will get a chance to give us structured feedback that will inform the work that will happen in the spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Sol. Two questions. If you could give an update on the next-gen Workday Director, kind of where we are at in that process and how soon that person's going to be on? And the second one is, Nate, can I have you talk a little bit more about, I know you mentioned the, the overall project is green and you're feeling like that. That contradicts what we're hearing from Baker-Tilly and that, and it also contradicts what, from doing many of these projects with as much of complexity, with as much of moving around pieces. I always get worried when I see watermelon project. And what I mean by that is those that go from green to red. It's okay to have, to begin in a cautious session. I don't want us to be overly, oh, it's green, it's green, it's green, and then all of a sudden, it's not green. So there's a little bit of a conflict there in my mind, and I just want you to talk to that a little bit.
Trustee Hipps, I'll take your first question. In regards to the next-gen director position, we will be wrapping that up today, and so we should have a formal announcement here pretty soon. But that, that interviewing and that process
But that, that interviewing and that process has been complete, so we should be wrapping that up today.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Trustee Hipps, Chair Saul. I, I share your caution on the overall status. At the same time, I think the status is based on our project plan. And we recognize that there are additional risks that go along with that that fall outside the, the concrete status of the project. At the same time, for most of the summer, the project itself overall was actually in yellow status because we had some delays in getting personnel to support our student-worker implementation part of our work, and we had some initial challenges related to data conversion in our prototype tenant. So I, I hope that provides some comfort that we are very carefully monitoring the status. And when it looks like we need to escalate or identify some key risks where we are headed off track and the potential is that a, a risk becomes an issue that we need to address, that we have already up to this point taken the, the, the step of moving the status on some of our individual work streams to red, which impacted then the overall yellow status.
All right, thank you very much, team. That was a great report. Thank you for the update. And before we take a short break, I'll just note for the record that all the trustees were in attendance for this committee, the whole meeting, except for Vice Chair Erlinson and Trustee Tully, who are at an ACCT conference, and Trustee Janicich. So we'll take five minutes. Thank you.
All right. Winona State holds a distinctive place in Minnesota higher education. We are the first teachers' college west of the Mississippi River. We are the oldest institution in the Minnesota State system. The legacy of preparing educators and leaders continues to define us. Today, 97% of our graduates are employed or in graduate school within one year. U.S. News World Report ranked Winona State University the number-one public university in the Minnesota State system. Our plan, our framework, is intentional, simple, but aligned. Mission drives vision, vision drives strategy, and strategy drives our tactics. But while we look carefully at both our mission and vision statement, we determined that our mission, anchored in the guiding principles of a community of learners improving our world, stood the test of time and remains the right foundation for Winona State. At the same time, however, our vision statement, which had not been updated for 14 years... At the same time, however, our vision statement, which had not been updated for 14 years, required renewal. Our, over the past year, we worked together to refresh our vision, to celebrate what we've been achieved, and to look boldly to what could be next. The result was a new forward-looking statement that reflected who we are today, but who we aspire to be. And so, our updated vision statement, which we're hoping gets approved today, is, "Winona State University strives to be Minnesota's preeminent student-centered academic community. As a community of learners, we support student growth and development by promoting purposeful student engagement, intellectual inquiry, creative innovation, and responsible stewardship of knowledge. The university aspires to be a leader in academic excellence, equity, and community engagement." One of the big things we feel needs to happen is to make that vision a reality, is we need to position ourselves, because I believe strategic planning is a team sport. It's a plan. It needs to be moved forward. It needs to be all of us together. We had over 50 planning sessions throughout the last year, working together as a community, to look at how we could achieve that vision statement. We felt we could achieve that vision statement through Winona State 2035. It's made up of the Warrior Way, the culture of community, belonging, built on kindness, connection, and civic engagement. The Warrior Edge, an academic and co-curricular excellence that continues to evolve to prepare every student for success. And the Warrior Shield, the financial, operational resilience that sustains our mission and ensures long-term viability. These pillars are a foundation of our work plan moving forward. In the next few minutes, you're going to hear from members of our community who bring these pillars to life to make our vision, hopefully, a reality. Beginning with Sophia Crowe, who will share with you how the Warrior Way is transforming the student experience through belonging, kindness, and community engagement.
Thank you, President Janz. My name is Sophia Crowe, and I'm the Winona State Student Body President. Today, I'm going to share how Winona State's Warrior Way creates a community of kindness through the visible actions of students, faculty, and administration. The Warrior Way establishes the values present in Winona State's community, of which a commitment to kindness remains a top priority. This kindness is present in conversations dedicated to bettering our campus. And through the implementation of the Warrior Way, Winona State faculty and administration insist everyone at Winona State is given the kindness and respect to have a voice and to ensure that voice is heard. The implementation of the Warrior Way is exemplified across WSU in a multitude of ways. Student voices lead and guide the foundation of countless boards and initiatives on WSU's campus. The most recent example exists directly in Winona State 2035 itself. Students recently presented their concerns regarding the limitations of our academic advising in those listening sessions, and their frustrations were acknowledged and addressed by faculty and administrators, who have since been working tirelessly to address academic advising on our campus. WSU's academic advising process was a topic that students requested to be altered, and their concerns were acknowledged and tended to. The kindness to listen and address student concerns highlights Winona State's commitment to building a positive campus community. Winona State's community of kindness and belonging is furthered by hands-on student participation and countless camping advising, campus advising boards. Students oversee and direct each of the college's deans advisory boards, which establish opportunities for students to have firsthand impacts on projects and oversight on collegiate deans. As a political science representative on the College of Liberal Arts Dean's Advisory Board, I've been allowed the unique experience of communicating directly with the College of Liberal Arts Dean to express concerns, share ideas, and develop ways to better serve our campus community. Not only do these advising boards create opportunities for students to enact college- and campus-wide change, but it also builds students' personal networks. The relationships created within these advising boards between students, college deans, and faculty establish kindness on an individual level, and as such, work to build a campus community centered around mutual respect and care for one another. The Warrior Way is an active component in building Winona State's community of kindness through purposeful actions of faculty, staff, and administrators that create a sense of belonging, respect, and validity for students and student voices. As the Warrior Way becomes an integral aspect of Winona State's community, its impact reverberates throughout our campus, establishing the importance that kindness plays and creating a well-rounded, student-prioritized university. Now, I would like to introduce Dr. Andrea Bates, a professor of history and legal studies at Winona State. She will be speaking on the Warrior Compass, which is another aspect of the Warrior Way that focuses on advancing retention and equitable student success with an emphasis on coaching, mentoring, and advising. Thank you.
Thank you, President Crowe, and thank you, all Board of Trustees. So, at the same time that we were developing this vision statement, Winona State got involved in two big student success initiatives. I'm here because I was the only fool dumb enough to join both of them. We joined the HLC's Student Success Academy and Ask You's Student Success Equity Initiative. And both are really different initiatives. But both brought people from across campus together to think really critically about our student success data and to solicit feedback from our students about their experience. In these, in this data and this feedback, we found a lot to celebrate. As President Janz just said, 97% of our graduates go on to get jobs in their field or go on to graduate school within one year. They don't only get jobs, they become leaders in healthcare, in education, in industry, and in technology, the things that are driving this state forward. Our retention and graduation rates are equally impressive. 81% of our students were retained last year. 67% of our students graduate within six years. And when we listened to our students, we heard why. Students spoke over and over again about the power of close relationships with faculty experts and about their experiences with high-impact, hands-on learning, the things that define Winona State University. We know that when Winona State students experience the best of Winona State, they excel. They excel as people and as professionals. But these listening sessions didn't just tell us about our success. They also told us about where we need to do better. Our success is not equally distributed. Only 67%, sorry, 67% of our students graduate within six years, but only 54% of our male non-athletes do. Our students of color, our Pell-eligible students do not have the same success rates as our white female students. Only 40% of our veterans are graduating within six years. These are big problems. They are problems that undermine our, the trust that our students put in us. They undermine our financial stability, and they undermine our mission. We take these problems really seriously. And to understand them, we turn to experts, not to a think tank, not to a consultant, but to our students. We listen deeply, and we try to do so with humility. And they told us about real problems. As President Crowe just shared, they told us about problems in advising, about uncertainty in accessing support services, and for some of them, a nagging sense that they didn't really belong on our campus. They also, our students are incredible, so they also offered us some solutions. Fix advising. Focus on mentorship. Treat us as individuals. It was in those conversations, sorry, I'm like half in Brenda's lab right now. Do your thing. It was in those conversations that Campus Compass was born. Campus Compass is a plan to transform our advising, to bring together data, technology, and a human connection, the thing Winona State does best. With this plan, advisors become a central hub of a connected network of faculty and staff, trained in culturally responsive practices that focus on the whole student, that see them as a person, as a learner, and as a future professional. It also institutionalizes the best of what Winona State is. Recently, our campus suffered a tremendous loss in the passing of the Director of our Warrior Success Center, Ron Strangie. Ron Strangie believed deeply in the goals of Equity 2030, and there is no human being that better exemplified how an individual touch can transform a student's life. Ron knew that struggle was not the opposite of progress. It was a central part of it. He knew that retention was not a number for a few people in enrollment management. It is everyone's job. Campus Compass institutionalizes that, that legacy at Winona State University. It makes persistence, graduation, and full-person success the heart of what we do. It's going to be a big lift. But it is work that we are proud to do and that we are excited to take on in the next 10 years. Now, I want to introduce our.
Before you. Thank you. We are going to go to time very quickly, so if you can truncate this just a little bit, because we're running on a deadline here. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. My name is Brenda Marsdala Kowalewski. I'm the provost, new provost. Thank you, Dr. Bates. I appreciate that. And thank you for the opportunity. I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the Warrior Edge. It is the pillar of the strategic plan that represents our commitment to innovation. It is our commitment to preparing our students with a future-ready education that equips them not just for their first job, but for the life, a lifetime of meaningful contribution. At the heart of the Warrior Edge is the development of an academic plan, designed to give our graduates a distinct advantage in the job market. This plan blends the bedrock of a liberal arts education with the skills and competencies needed for workforce readiness. So, we're doubling down on enduring literacy, things like critical thinking, written and oral communication skills, digital and information literacy. These are the skills that empower our students to adapt, lead, and thrive in 21st-century jobs that we haven't even imagined yet. So, our academic plan challenges us to think about three different kinds of questions. How do we teach? Who do we teach? What do we teach? I'm going to start with, what do we teach? We're sharpening our academic edge by aligning programs with workforce needs, locally, nationally, and globally, and we're using market demand data to do that. Secondly, how do we teach? We're continuing to increase those real-world experiences that you just heard Dr. Bates talk about in the curriculum, because students need it. Our partners are expecting it. And we're teaching in ways that build the student's resume while they earn their degree. Third, who do we teach? This gives us an opportunity to really think about reimagining our Rochester campus. It's an exciting opportunity, because we're designing a curriculum, a schedule, and a delivery model that meets the needs of complex learners, those who don't necessarily fit the mold of that traditional college student. So, just imagine for just a minute, Winona State in Rochester as a workforce innovation hub, a place where students, where working students and professionals can pursue degree completion, stackable micro-credentials, certifications, and employer-driven pathways. It's not just a campus. It's an incubator for educational innovation, where student needs drive the mode of delivery, and industry helps shape the future of learning. In summary, the Warrior Edge is our promise to deliver a student-centered, innovative, academic experience in Winona and Rochester. It's about preparing digitally fluent, civically engaged graduates who are ready to lead and solve complex challenges of our time. Next, I'd like to introduce John Olson, our Vice President for University Advancement.
Trustee Teffer, a couple of minutes? Would that be okay? Okay, with you. Okay. Very good. Very good. I want to share a quick narrative about how we're protecting Winona State's future. We call it the Warrior Shield. That's our way of making sure we stay resilient, sustainable, and responsive, not just for today's students, but the ones who will choose Winona State for years to come. We're doing that in three big ways: by strengthening our spaces, modernizing our systems, and stewarding our resources wisely. Strengthening our spaces, let's start with our campus. Winona State's the oldest campus west of the Mississippi. It's the first teachers' college, and we're proud of that. But old buildings need care, and we're investing in them through our LESS initiative. That's leading energy savings and sustainability. It's about smart upgrades, renewable energy, and using space better. This fall, we hit 105% capacity in our residence halls. That's a good thing. People want, or students want to live and learn at Winona State, even when we had to open up overflow housing in spaces like our alumni house and our sustainability house. To meet the demand, we're planning Foundation Hall, a new residence hall built for today's students and tomorrow's needs. You'll hear more about that later this morning. Modernizing our systems. Now, having great spaces is one thing, but what happens in them matters just as much. That's where CECL comes in, the Center for Interdisciplinary Collaboration, Engagement, and Learning. It's a new kind of academic space, flexible, tech-rich, and built for collaboration across disciplines. We're hopeful this will be part of a successful Minnesota State bonding request for this session. Plus, we're built, the building will help us graduate high-need professionals into the workforce, such as data scientists and mathematicians. And behind the scenes, we're building data hubs, tools that'll make us smarter, faster decisions, from enrollment trends to classroom usage. We're using data to guide our steps and respond to student needs in real time. Thirdly, stewarding our resources. We're making sure Winona State stays strong financially and demographically. We're diversifying enrollment with concurrent enrollment pilots for high-school students, improving financial aid packaging, and gearing up for our next capital campaign. Yes, gearing up for our next capital campaign. And we're leaning into our strengths, especially healthcare education. Right now, 35% of our students are in nursing or health sciences. With the Mayo Clinic nearby, we're positioned to grow as a regional healthcare student destination, and we're already leading the system in this space. So, that's a quick version of the Warrior Shield, our promise to keep Winona State strong, sustainable, and ready for whatever comes next. Through smart facilities, modern systems, and responsible stewardship, we're building a future that serves generations of learners. I'll now turn it over to President Janz to close our presentation.
There you go. Thank you. What you heard today reflects the heart of Winona State 2035, a vision grounded in people, purpose, and possibilities. It's strengthening our community of learners to ensure that everyone who joins it knows they belong here. And it drives our ability to meet our new proposed vision statement forward. So, with that, if we have time, I'll take questions.
Thank you very much. We have a very short amount of time. Just as an aside, I need to say this to everyone. It is so amazing when people come and share their passions and their hearts with us, and we run against a clock all the time. We could probably sit and talk to you for three hours. We appreciate your beautiful presentation and your slides. And just so you know that it's not, we're against something that we don't have much control over. So, I'm just going to take a couple of questions from the committee before we go on any further. And the chair has a question.
Thank you. How does the strategic plan relate to the system policy of Equity 2030?
Chair Teffer, Chair Saul, that's a fantastic question. I would say we have, the entire Warrior Way is built to bond belonging, and belonging just doesn't happen. It's built. And that's one of the big things we're doing on campus, is mostly that's aligned, whether it's the Campus Compass, which is a part of it, which we really are going to be overhauling all of the way we do advising on campus. And that's one of the biggest areas, is to start meeting the needs of Equity 2030, because we see the issue in data, and we're really actively working to address it.
Trustee Garaska.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was taken in particular with your emphasis on persistence and retention. And I'm wondering if you have imagined how it is that you're going to, over the next 10 years, be measuring and establishing what constitutes success in those two areas?
Trustee Garaska, Chair Teffer, absolutely. And there's actually two projects that are mirrored together within the Winona State 2035. There's a data hubs project where we're specifically looking at how we use data and how we leverage data on campus. And that has significant impact on advising and how we advise students. And we are setting some pillars. You know, I actually have told the cabinet, and I have said, "I want a 72%, 74% graduation rate." Well, to do that, how do you have to increase your? Well, to do that, how do you have to increase your, you know, persistence rates, and that'll go down? And, you know, to me, I think the sky's the limit. And really, if we work with some of our, like example, male population, if we can even get them to match our female population, it'd be amazing how much that would increase our overall persistence rate on campus.
Yes. Chancellor Olson.
Chair Teffer, just a comment. It's great to see Winona State finally have the kind of leadership to move forward in that direction.
Was that it?
One last comment from anyone? No? I have to, I have a little comment to Ms. Crowe. Your, it kind of hits the heart. Just be kind. It's like, if you took that home and you put that on your refrigerator, or you write it anywhere, anyone, what a magnificent statement. So thank you very much. This was quite, this was, this was something that's unusual for us to hear. We usually don't get, I was, I was talking to President Janz, and I asked him if he was an attorney, and he said no, because I thought, well, this is like justification. There's a, there's a certain amount, you know, you change something, and then you have to justify it, and you guys did a magnificent job of that. So obviously, I'm, I'm making my comments without, before we voted, but we are going to now vote on this, all right? So now that we're finished at that point, the recommended board action, and in order to do this, I'm like, I'm going to, I'm going to reread the, the vision statement, and it is, it appears in the online board book, I believe on page 164. Winona State University strives to be Minnesota's preeminent student-centered academic community. As a community of learners, we support student growth and development by promoting purposeful student engagement, intellectual inquiry, inquiry, creative innovation, and responsible stewardship of knowledge. The university aspires to be a leader in academic excellence, equity, and community engagement. The recommended board action then is, the Academic and Student Affairs Committee recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed changes to the vision statement at Winona State University. Do I have an emotion to approve? All in favor, this is by roll call vote. Vice Chair Kathy Sharon. D. Johnson, Jacqueline Johnson. Trustee Mo.
Aye.
Trustee Richter. Trustee Tully, who's not here. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. The proposed amendment will be added to the consent agenda for board approval. Congratulations, and thank you so much for your work. Thank you. The third and final agenda item for review and discussion is titled "Strategy for the Future of Academic and Student Affairs." That's a heavy lift. The purpose of this discussion is to understand the process by which the Academic and Student Affairs Division has engaged to update its strategic plan for the next five years. Here to present, right there by herself at the table, is Senior Vice Chancellor Satasha Green Stevens. She's the Senior Vice Chancellor for Student and Academic Affairs, and I'll let you take it away. Thank you.
Good morning, Trustee Teffer, Chair Saul, Chancellor Olson, trustees. I'm actually very excited about the opportunity to share academic and student affairs strategic planning. Throughout the last six months, we've really been asking ourselves and the Academic and Student Affairs Division in the System Office, what do we look like in five years? How do we know we're doing what we need to do to be future-ready? And so six months ago, we started really having these intentional conversations, looking at our previous strategic plan, listening to conversations with the board. I know the board trustee retreat, there was a robust conversation about where we should be as a system yesterday, or my days, yes, yesterday, when we had a conversation with Deed, really talking about workforce and alignment. And then we had the wonderful opportunity to go to MSP and hear about aviation. But one of the things that I learned yesterday of all the jobs at the airport that don't have anything to do with being a pilot, and I thought about, how are we training our students for all of these opportunities within the state? And then we heard from the chancellor, his vision. And so it just made me re-inform and reinforce the work that we're doing in Academic and Student Affairs to be future-ready and to be an innovative division over the next five years and beyond. So why does it matter? So as we began to talk about it, there were several things that really centered on our conversation. The change in student demographics, demographics and expectation. Again, with the conversation, indeed, we know that no longer do we only have the traditional students that are attending our institutions. We have part-time students, full-time students, students from different backgrounds, students from different socioeconomic backgrounds, age groups across the spectrum. And so they also come with us with expectations about education. And so really looking at, how are we making sure we're meeting all of our students that are coming to us where they are? And then also, we had to look at workforce and industry evolution. Are we, do we have the programming? Do we have the student supports as it relates to making sure our students, when they leave us, they're ready for the workforce in the industry as it is constantly evolving? And then Equity 2030, we know that's our organizational principle. Not only is it a moral imperative, it's an economic imperative. And so no matter what we do, how are we making sure that we're aligning our work over the next five years to be future-ready, that we're also making sure that we're eliminating those equity gaps, enhancing access, and helping students with success? And that means we have to look at innovation in our teaching and learning spaces. And we believe what we're going to share today shows you that our faculty and our staff are really thinking about being future-ready and the work we're starting now. And all of these decisions that we make in the Academic and Student Affairs realm across our system, they have to be data-informed decisions. We have a lot of data across our system, but how are we using it? How is it used in a friendly way so that we can make decisions that make sense for our students that are data-informed? And all of these pieces come to academic and student affairs being student-ready and being resilient and sustainable. We have to look at our data. We have to look at our programming, and it has to be in line with the workforce and the industry evolution. But in to do that, we also have to be flexible in our policies. Our policies and our regulatory, there has regulatory affairs have to be some shifts. We have to have policies that are also innovative, that can support the work for ASA to be future-ready. So in these conversations, we really came up with an operational framework. I think when you have strategic planning, a lot of times you have a great document, and it sits on the shelf or it's a link on a website. And we said, regardless of what those goals or those strategies are, there has to be an operational framework for us to be able to implement that successfully. So as a division, we really said, whatever we do, it has to be student-centered education. We have to make sure that the decisions that we make, the policies that we pass, what's happening in our classrooms, what's happening in our student support services are effective and they're student-centered. We have to have student-centered education, and that means a commitment to equity and inclusion as we think about our Equity 2030 work. But also, as we think about innovation, we know there's a lot of conversation out there about AI in higher education. And so we had to ask ourselves, where are we as it relates to being ready for AI in higher education? And later in the presentation, I'll show you that we're doing some great things already that we can take to scale, and I believe that we are prepared to really engage in AI in higher ed. So this operational framework really had six things. Systemization. And I think, again, as the board's been having conversations, how do we act as a system? Workday is making us think a little bit differently about being a system, but in order for us to truly be resilient and sustainable, we have to work at the, as a system. And systemization is going to be as important in academic and student affairs as we think about the future of our programming and alignment with the workforce. Again, we talked about data literacy, collaboration, but one thing that I think is going to be significantly important, regardless of the initiatives or the strategies that we have, is change management. Because as we're thinking about being future-ready, that means we're doing things differently. And we have to support people on the journey of doing things differently. And I think we're finding that with Workday, that things are looking different, but also people are important in the process for us to get into the future. So how are we supporting with that change management? And change management is going to have to be integral to our ASA strategic planning. Program flexibility that goes back to our demographics, that goes back to the workforce industry evolution, how we're being flexible in our programming, how we're offering our courses, and we'll talk a little bit about that. And then resources statement. We can't have the conversation about resources in isolation with, with facilities and finance. It also has to be in partnership with how we're offering education courses and what we're offering, because that will be a big part of how we think about resources for sustainability for the system. So here, as we begin to think about our work, one of the things we thought that was so important was to continue to look at our guided learning pathways. And our guided learning pathways fundamentally really has three strong pillars. How are we looking at our career pathways? How are we looking at those curriculum pathways? How are we looking at that first-year experience for our students? How are we engaging them and onboarding them to our campuses? And then throughout their process with, while they're with us, how are we making sure they have the advisement and that comprehensive student support? And so when doing that, we really start to think about some of the things that we're already doing that we think really support students as it relates to that career pathway, that relates to that curriculum pathway, helps support transfer and mobility. And so we just wanted to highlight, here are some of the things that we're already doing that's creative and innovative as we think future, as we're thinking future-forward that meets the needs of our diverse students. One of the things that we are, we're beginning to do and moving forward with is our stackable credentials. We know that non-credit-to-credit, those micro credentials and those digital badges are really important to our students that are coming in that may want something not long-term, a quick and dirty certificate, and then how if after they had a great experience, now want to come and transition to a long-term degree. And so we're expanding that work, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. We're also being innovative in our offerings. One of BSU, Bemidji State University, is one of our institutions that's piloting this. But we're also trying to roll out three-year baccalaureate degrees. And we're not just talking about 120-credit degree that we're just going to accelerate and somebody does it in three years. We're talking about a credit degree that's intentional, about a student being able to finish in three years. And HLC has a new category out there for these three-year baccalaureate degrees. We're actually partnering with Mohi, who is actually looking at us to help them come up with some policy around that. And so there's some opportunity there to be creative in how are we offering three-years degrees? Again, students coming in, less time, less credit, less debt, but having a rigorous program and being ready for the industry. And I won't go through every single one of these, but I think it's important just for us to be able to see already the innovative things that we're doing that we can expand to be future-ready. When we think about cost, we already have 11 campuses that are offering those zero degrees, where students are not paying for textbooks. We have 16 more institutions in development. And then we even have a transfer pathway where a student would come out without having the cost of a textbook. How do we expand that? When we think about our enhanced access, again, when we look at our demographics and the opportunities with the changing demographics and where our students are when they, they come to us, whether they're part-time and full-time, we enhanced access, we have an opportunity for students to engage with us, whether that's face-to-face, whether that's online, whether that's hybrid, whether that's high flex. And how do we continue to do that to meet students where they are and the type of delivery that they need for their education? And then also too, when we think about dual enrollment, we're not just starting with students that are registered with us at our universities. We're starting early, and we're looking at students in our, in our K through 12 settings. And then also, I think it's important, we're doing a lot in the academic space, but we're also doing a lot in the student support space, making sure that our students have the mental health and basic needs supports to be successful in our classroom. And I think that aligns with our second and third pillar of our guided learning pathways. And then one of the things we're very proud of is our emergency grant program is live at all of our colleges and universities where students can engage with financial supports that may help them not to stop out and drop out and be able to continue to persist with their education. So some, I think some of the board may be interested in this. I know the topic of AI has come up quite a bit in some of the conversations. And so as we, as ASA and the System Office, we really begin to talk about how do we integrate AI into education at Minnesota State, but doing it in a responsible and ethical way. And so here's just a little bit of what our campuses are already doing in the space and being future-ready with AI in education. One of the things when we think about our academic programming to support learning in AI, many of our campuses already have degrees that are training our students to be able to go into a career that's AI-forward. So when we think about Riverland, they have an undergraduate certificate in artificial intelligence foundations. HTC has an associate's degree in artificial intelligence. MSU Mankato has a master's degree. St. Cloud State has a graduate certificate. And at BSU, Winona State, Metro, and SMSU, all of their data sciences BS degrees have some type of course component that has AI. So as we're thinking about what's happening in the classroom, preparing our students to be able to go in fields that have the integration of AI, we're doing that. So as we're thinking about being future-ready in this space, we believe we're doing that and have an opportunity to expand. But also, we, that's the learning space, but we also think that there's an opportunity to support teaching in AI. And we've been doing that over the last couple of years. For example, our NED program, which is the Network of Educational Development, not only for our faculty but for our staff, we started in a couple of years ago, I think in 2023, providing webinars around AI. And some of the topics that we've covered was AI and creating a syllabus, discussion prompts, essays for your lab, the lab works. We also created a community of practice where faculty and staff could come together to share best practices around AI and the teaching space. In 2024, there was some additional in-depth work of how you could begin to use AI in teaching AI in the classroom. And we also have some plans for the future. We'll continue to do these AI workshops, preparing our faculty and staff who are interested in that space. And some of the topics that we're looking at is AI and career readiness. Again, we know in some of the fields and some of our industry partners, they are expecting our students to be ready to come and use AI in their field. And so we're, we're setting up webinars, or how are we making sure that we're meeting that need? And so AI and career readiness, open education resources, how do you use AI for authentic assessment, and then humanizing learning. And so we are doing some things, not only in the learning space with the degrees that we're offering, we're also doing in the professional development space to support in our teaching and learning. One project that I, that we're really proud about is we're, we're in a pilot process with NASH, which is, I think it's the National Association of System Heads, am I correct with that? Yes. And Google, they have a partnership, and we were selected as one of the systems to pilot in offering Google AI Essentials and AI Prompting Essentials certificates to our students, to our alumni, and to our faculty and staff. And we received a grant to do that. So we're also supporting our alumni who maybe want to come and engage again and level up around some of the AI supports. But also, not only in the teaching and learning, we are also doing some stuff, some things in our student services. And so I want to highlight Metro State University and what they're doing with student services and particularly transfer with AI. So I'm going to kick it over to President Arthur to share some of what their campus...
All right. Thank you very much, Senior Vice Chancellor Green Stevens, and Chair Teffer, and trustees, and Chancellor Olson. So the work that we've been doing in this design accelerator, which was a fantastic opportunity, we brought together a team to focus on what are transfer challenges, and we included colleagues from St. Paul College and Minneapolis College, because many of their students do transfer to Metro. And we asked a member of the transfer unit at the System Office so we could have a complete look at what the issues were. And one of the issues that we evolved as, emerged as a persistent issue over time is establishing course equivalencies so that students understand, you know, what courses will actually count for them when they move into their baccalaureate program and what the program of study looks like. This tends to be a person-intensive manual process with, you know, the student making a request. And in our case recently, we noticed how many students are applying just so they can get a transfer evaluation, and then they make their decision as to whether or not they're going to pursue their degree. They actually should have that decision made first, but they don't have the information that they need. So we are also working with a consortium through NASH of other colleges and universities that are working with a system that's called Coursewise. And what Coursewise does, we have, we have read in all of our catalog data for the three institutions, as well as course outlines and learning outcomes, which are all publicly available. And... And the Coursewise system will give us back a listing of all of what they believe are the equivalent courses. Now, we're piloting this and we know AI is not perfect. So then we are going to, we have trained a, a group of department chairs at the university who will then sit down, take the same data and evaluate, you know, which courses would be equivalent. And then we will compare that against what the system tells us as our means of validating and improving the trust in the system. When we finish with department faculty chairs, we're going to have registrars, our credit evaluators and advisors also take a look at this. So the hope is we can get really strong sense of equivalencies, if there are patterns such as, you know, general education courses come up with the strongest equivalencies, what happens across different majors. So it's a, it's a process. It's probably going to take at least another year to get through this, but the real potential here is that every course in the Minnesota State system could be fed into Coursewise and we would have available, accessible to our students, the information they need to make their decisions about their next steps. And, you know, this is not going to cut our faculty who are the experts in the curriculum and learning out of the process, but we'll give them a tool that will make it much easier for them to be able to, yes, verify that this course will count and be able to make sure that the student has that information. So more to come, we're just in the process of doing that first step of validation, but it's a really exciting potential for the future of course equivalency.
So one of the things we also thought about as we were thinking about being a future-ready academic and student affairs division, we thought, how are we aligning our programming with labor market and the workforce needs? And one of the things that we really wanted to center on was how was ASA preparing for workforce PEL? And working very closely with Workforce and Economic Development Division, Shannon Bryan, who couldn't be here today, what we found is we're quite ready for workforce PEL and we have opportunities with workforce PEL and it could really be a game changer for the system. And so one of the things that we're doing to prepare for workforce PEL is we're going to be creating a system-wide workforce PEL task force that will be co-chaired with the academic and student affairs division leadership and the workforce and economic division. And so some of the things that we've already begun to do is really look at what are those non-credit to credit programs that we can audit, that we can look to see that doesn't have any, doesn't have duplication and competition across our system. If, again, going back to being system, systemness, we want to make sure that we are not setting up our campuses to compete against each other, but really have an opportunity to have these non-credit to credit programming at each of our institutions. And one of the things that we also have begun to be thinking about is as we're thinking about this credit to non-credit, we don't want it to have a lot of bureaucracy and, and so how do we have a quick approval process at the system level that is agile for flexibility and innovation for our campuses to be able to do this work at the campus level? And so what are those eligibility requirements that will be needed? And we know that the rulemaking for workforce PEL was due to happen in November, but based on what's happening at the federal level, we probably will see that will be pushed back, which for us makes it even, gives us more time to even be able to put these things in place. So when workforce PEL rolls out, we're, we're ready to go. And so one of the other pieces that are really low-hanging fruit to prepare us for workforce PEL and, and being future-ready as it works for workforce and industry evolution is those articulate agreements, you know, between our non-credit and credit programs that already meet regulations. We believe that what regulations may be, so we're looking at those courses or those programs that already meet those regulations. So how do we begin to elevate those and get those things into place so they'll be ready to go if not now before even the rulemaking comes out? But also too, not only looking at the academic piece, one of the pieces that's going to be so important for us to be prepared for workforce PEL is how are we supporting our students in advising and our student support services? We really need to make sure that we're specifically tailoring our short-term learners' supports. They're, they're going to be very different than our traditional students. So how are we making sure that the advisement meets their needs, flexible? We're offering times that they'll be able to engage with our campuses. And so really bringing our, our support services together to be thinking about how are we tailoring our supports for success for those short-term learners, which many of them will be adult learners that want to upskill and reskill. And that's a very different type of support system than maybe for some of our traditional full-time students. And so one of the things that our academic, our Associate Vice Chancellor of Student Affairs and Enrollment Management has really brought to the table about, we have to do some strategic, strategic enrollment management planning and approach that really lists specific strategies for how we recruit students for these programs. Recruitment for traditional students look very different. Supports for traditional students may look very different. And so making sure that we have a system-wide approach of how this may look to support our campuses, our, our, our staff on our campuses as we're thinking about not only to recruit students, but make sure they persist. And then last, you know, ensuring that, that as we are rolling out programming, how are we engaging our student support services function so those functions map and align with the programmings that we offer? So again, as we think about workforce PEL, we believe that we are in a, in a place that we are ready for workforce PEL. There's so much more that we're doing. These are just some high-level things. But again, we're in partnership with Workforce and Economic Development. Shannon, who's not here with us, came up with a plan that our team had an opportunity to weigh in on and add to. And so we believe when we finally get the rulemaking, we will be in a position to be able to support our programming and our student support services to meet these flexible short-time learners that engage with our institutions. And so lastly, as we think about being future-ready in academic and student affairs, we got to look at our policies. You know, one of the things we talked about is we have to be able to do an audit and make sure that the policies that we have in place are not causing barriers for our students. And we started that work a couple of years back when we really started rolling out Equity 2030. We wanted to look at our policies to make sure that we weren't creating barriers based on just because that's how we've always done it. And really looking at policies that are more flexible for the students that we're going to serve. And so with intentionality, we need to do that again. If we're going to be future-ready and we have the diversity of students that are coming with us, coming in and out of our, our system in different ways, different onboarding, different onramps, we also have to make sure that our policies support doing that. As we also think about being future-ready in AI and higher education, how are we addressing AI and the ethical use? We're going to have to look at policies to ensure that we're ethically using AI, we have to be transparent with that, the bias mitigation, and then training not only for our faculty, staff, but also our administrators that, that are using this work. And so again, looking at policies that, that exist and we may need to create some policies to do that work. But also last but not least, there's going to be an impact with ASA being future-ready on governance and accountability. And so again, looking at our, our governance structures, how are we allocating resources to our structures, institutional accountability across our system as it relates to when we do identify initiatives? How are we making sure that our campuses get the resources to be able to successfully implement those? But then also what is the accountability or the assessment to know that those initiatives have worked? And then last but not least is aligning policies with our strategic goals, doing that audit and review. Once we have determined what those strategic priorities are for the system, the chancellor has identified his strategic priorities and his work plan, how are we making sure that policy aligns to that for us to be able to meet those goals? And, and we can begin to do that now. And in some places we're doing that, especially with addressing our AI and ethical use. We already have a guidance committee at the system level that has already created some guidance around how do we use it ethically, looking at student code of conduct, looking at having different resources for, for folks that want to implement it, whether in the classroom, whether in student supports, whether in providing professional development, how are we making sure that we're using AI in an ethical and responsible way? So policy alignment is going to be especially important as we think about ASA being student-ready. So lastly, I just want to say, so what? You're probably like, okay, you shared all this wonderful stuff, what, what do you need from us? And so really this is just a call to action, just really wanting the board's support as we think about being future-ready and really the role of, your role in our strategic vision is really you helping us be a champion for whatever those strategic initiatives are that the board has said to, to really help us to move that work forward, advocate for policy changes that make sense and that align with resources and with our priorities. Also being able to support innovation. I think, you know, board engagement really fosters that culture of innovation in supporting, scaling of pilots and building capacity for change management. And I think we talked about change management before, there's a lot of change happening in our system, there's a lot of change happening in higher education. And so that support from the board to try to do innovative things without being penalized or, you know, we need that support to know that you stand behind the innovation that's happening on our campuses. And then resources and funding alignment. You know, we've been having that conversation, we know where we are financially, but again, academic and student affairs play a big part of where we can be as it relates to our persistence and sustainability. And board endorsement really helps us secure external funding and helps us to really ensure sustainable resources as it relates to our strategic goals. And then shared ownership and responsibility, you know, as, as board leaders really promoting that collective responsibility that drives us to be a system and, and that will help us to transform and really serve the communities that our campuses are in. And so this is just an overview of the work we've been doing over the last six months where we believe we are to be future-ready and some of these things we can take to scale. And of course, there's more opportunity, but I will stop there and, and stand for questions.
Thank you. First, I want to thank President Arthur for your contribution and I want to ask President Danielson if before we open this up too far, would you like to make any comments?
I would just say that, that I'm really proud of our system as far as what we have been doing to prepare. I, I think that, you know, we don't often give Satasha the opportunity to really go into depth on, on all the preparedness that we have. And, and especially the curriculum mapping, the onboarding of students, the advising that we're doing and the wraparound services that we're providing, all of those things are the human touch that really helps retain our students and help them be successful. So we certainly have to do all the things we need to do with AI, but we're, we're on the right track. So I just want the board to, to feel confident that both at the two-year and four-year level, we're doing what we need to do to, to help our students be successful.
Thank you so much. There's a couple of little things just I want to kind of pull together for the Senior Vice Chancellor. There were many, there are many pieces to this and the things that, that sort of stuck out to me. One of the people who is not here today is Trustee Erlinson and my own best guess is she would be applauding your concept of future-ready. She, her, her big thing throughout has been the system needs to be student-ready and I'm thinking that the way that the system is student-ready is to be future-ready. That sounds like those things are a, a close match. The system-wide task force for workforce PEL sort of warms my heart. Let me or anyone else know how, how anyone on the Board of Trustees can be of service or be involved at least for communication purposes. Your emphasis on career counseling and advisement goes to my heart. It's one of the most, it's one of the things that I feel like is central to all of the other, every other benchmark we want to meet, it starts there. And finally, your comment about looking at the board and understand, and helping us to understand there's risk involved with things and what our risk tolerance is for doing new things and trying new things. And finally, I want to identify especially to the committee, but for everyone on the board, that this is a draft document, the way you've got it written. My, my hope is that what that means is that you will, you will stand for comments and for people, I would, I would suggest that people directly write to the Senior Vice Chancellor and if you put in the, in the topic area so she can sort out through her email, if you put prepping the future for ASA or something simple like that, it will come to her awareness. Would that be helpful? And we are already way over time because we, I mean, as these things always go, but I'll certainly stand for a couple of questions before we finish and Trustee Grabowska.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Satasha, amongst the myriad gaps in my knowledge, there are two that came out today that I wanted to pursue for very quickly. Number one, the expansion of transfer pathways. President Lindstrom and myself began this journey, when Kevin, 2016, 2015? And, and so my question is, where do we have yet to go? Because this is part of your future planning. And the second one, if you could define for me non-credit to credit stackable credentials? Because I, that's something that's totally missing from, from my lexicon.
Chair Tefler, Trustee Grabowska. So the first one with transfer pathways. So right now we have 26 implemented transfer pathways and only 26 content areas. And so we have been looking at the data to see where are our most transferred programs. And so there may be an opportunity to expand in other content areas to, to create transfer pathways. So that's, that, that piece of, of that question. Not a guarantee, but there is some opportunity there. And we've actually had some folks ask about, is there a possibility, especially when we think about some of those programs at our university level that may be eliminated due to enrollment? Are there opportunities to do transfer pathways and even some consortium kind of pieces? And I think about women's studies, I think about ethnic studies, those programs that are so important, but in many cases are eliminated due to enrollment, but also bring an experience for our students. So how can we leverage transfer pathways or even collective degrees around those areas that we know are important for our students to be well-rounded students? So that's one example of that. And I believe the second piece you talked about was non-credit to credit stackable credentials. We know in many, and I may turn to President Danielson for this, that in many of our technical colleges, we do have industry partner, partners where there are customized training where it's specific to that industry partner and it's not for credit. And they receive some type of credential, but it's not a credit, it's not a credit credential. And so if we have that industry partner and a student now wants to engage with Minnesota State now to get a degree, how does that credential stack into something that is credited towards a degree? And that goes back to that workforce alignment, especially if we're going to really be moving forwards workforce PEL and the opportunity to be more flexible and being able to offer financial aid to those type of programming. We also want to make sure that our students also have opportunities to transfer into some of our other programs, associate degrees, and then possibly to our baccalaureate degrees and even our graduate programs. But I'll, I'll let President Danielson talk a little bit more about those non-credit pieces.
Of course, there's many, yeah, of course, there's many options and I'm not thinking of all of them right now, but one that came to mind was we have non-credit CDL and then we also have a credit-based program. And so one of the examples there is if someone's going through the non-credit CDL, they can apply for credit for prior learning and get credit for that and then complete what they needed to complete that wasn't covered and that's a non-credit to credit option.
Thank you. I, I, I think we are to time and I want to thank everyone and please don't forget, this is a draft document, this is an important piece for the system. It's very important for trustees to fully engage, review what's available in print. Please direct comments or questions or anything else to the Senior Vice Chancellor or her office. And I think that probably this will be a conversation that will continue in the future. So thanks again. I think with that, we are adjourned.
We will go ahead and start off the finance and facilities meeting right away while Associate, or Vice Chancellor Mackey and Associate Vice Chancellor Swanson are coming forward. System Director Anderson, please feel free to come forward also. Our president will be coming forward. Today's, we're going to break this into two sections. The first section, we will have the contracts that we'll review. And the second, then we'll take a break for lunch and then move into the energy savings program and an update on the annual operating budget. To get this started, we'll go ahead and do the, the roll call for the committee. Trustee Coles. Trustee Coles.
Here.
Trustee Janasik. Trustee Jana Johnson. Trustee Jacqueline Johnson. Vice Chair Mo. And the chair is present. I'd also like to welcome our president liaisons, President Janz and President Burton. And President Burton is joining us for the first time at this meeting as liaison. Thank you for for your service and for both of you being being here with the committee. First item of business is the minutes from June 18th. Are there any changes to the to the minutes? Seeing none, is the, it's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved in second, we'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Coles. Trustee Janasik. Trustee Jana Johnson. Trustee Jacqueline Johnson. Vice Chair Mo. And the chair votes aye, those are approved. We will now turn it over to Vice Chancellor Mackey for a few comments to get this started.
Thank you, Chair Hips. Just a couple comments to just before we get into the formal agenda. In November, when the board will be back meeting at the system office, we thought it would be appropriate for the Finance and Facilities Committee to get a formal update. In November, when the board is, will be meeting back at Wells Fargo Place, you know, during the course of the last year, we provided you updates on the progress we had related to the construction. And I know most of you have have seen the renovated space, but as part of our agenda in November, we will plan on providing a brief summary in your packet and brief presentation on the overall project and the and the success of it, both from a timeline and a budget perspective. I mentioned previously in the committee of the whole, but just wanted to emphasize that there's in the finance world right now, the 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 main emphasis is working through our financial statement preparations in anticipation of completing them for the November board meeting. Also, today, we will introduce in the second half of the meeting a new one-page document that tries to provide some financial highlights of college and university health. And I'll talk more about it at that particular meeting. And it'll become part of the vice chancellor's update on a regular basis to to start each meeting. But one of the, one of the aspects of it to just provide some budget information that's changed since we put the packet to to bed late last week is that the the state did have some good financial news that was reported at the end of last week, and that will close the 2425 biennium by adding $941 million to the estimated end of '25. Final revenues came in 2.1% higher than estimates, and general fund spending was about a percent, half a percent higher. But overall, that's good news heading into the November forecast that the state's position has improved a bit. And I assume that falls in line similar to our process of closing our books for '25, that the state is is going through that similarly and had that news to report and post it on their website the end of last week. So we'll spend time talking about more about the budget, of course, in the second half of the meeting. So that concludes my report. And if I'll see if there's any questions before turning it over to Tim Anderson to start our contracts.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Mackey. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll move into contracts. One call out in your packet. You will notice the the section there of the contracts that are below that $3 million threshold. Just, you know, that was a new thing that we brought in in the last year, just a reminder to take a review of those. With that, Vice Chancellor Mackey.
There we go. We're good? Okay. Good, good morning or good afternoon. First contract is going to be the Transfer Evaluation System, also known as TESS. This is a College Source solution that bolts onto the rest of the College Source solutions that Academic and Student Affairs manages. This contract is supported by Michael Olson, who is online, I believe, along with Jessica Miller. So if we have any questions, they can certainly be available to help answer. But the TESS system, Transfer Evaluation System, is a mission-critical academic technology that really underpins the Minnesota State's course evaluation and transfer credit process. This was originally approved by the board in May of 2021 and enables a unified, transparent, and efficient credit transfer experience across all colleges and universities. And it directly supports Board Policy 3.21 on undergraduate credit transfer and aligns with the next-gen vision for integrated student systems. Specifically, following the board 2024 board revision of the system policies 3.2.1, this is now required to, for campuses to use the TESS evaluation tracker workflow for courses routed to faculty or staff approval. Just a brief highlight, this allows for faster turnaround and transfer evaluations, fewer manual routing errors, and more consistency in transfer decisions across the system. The request before the board today is a request to extend this contract to June 30th of 2028 to align with the rest of the College Source contracts with additional three one-year options, which is 2031, which also aligns with the the optional extensions for for those those solutions. We're adding 712,522 for a total not to exceed of $1.95 million. And then the request is in the board packet, so available for questions.
Are there any questions?
I may be misunderstanding different systems. How does this align with? Or does it with what President Arthur just presented about their transfer evaluation work, which probably also has some resources committed to it? Are they this, is it the same kind? I mean, I'm familiar with the process, but it sounds like we've got two similar things going on here.
I'm going to leave this for Michael Olson. If he's online, I can answer that, but I believe there's consistency between the two. I think this is the solution, the technical solution. Okay, Michael, the question is, this test system, how does this relate to what the transfer discussion was with Academic Student Affairs that was previously held in the last discussion? And you should be available now.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair and trustees. This is a system that was. So my understanding of what we discussed, the previous discussion was. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, good. So the the this is separate from the work that. Excuse me. Sorry, I was having feedback. My understanding from the previous discussion was they were talking about some work that was being done and that's piloting new ways of looking at the at transfer equivalency evaluation. This is a system that was put in place to improve transfer equivalency. I think it was last year. And so this is the the system that is being is is being worked, is being utilized currently.
And I know we had a little bit of duplication of there. Let's take that that question offline. And just to confirm, I think what it is, is the TES is the one that's the standard right now across the board. And the one then that President Arthur was talking about was more looking at saying, okay, how do we get future ready? How do we move move into the future? But let's, if that's different, please correct.
That is exactly correct, sorry.
Are there any any other questions? Are there any other questions with regards to to TES?
So can you give us a just a a simple explanation of what this software does? So you take a class at Central Lakes College and you want to transfer it to Minnesota State University Mankato. Does this software come into play in some respect? I'm not quite understanding what the software does.
So what this software does is allow for the review of a course that's being transferred in to see if it's equivalent for what's being offered at the at the college or university. It's basically a workflow software that allows for an efficient way of being able to move on the review process through in an accountable fashion and being able to track the time that it takes for the review to take place and for the students to have the award, the credit awarded.
I see the Senior Vice Chancellor came forward. Do you want to add to that comment?
Yes, I thought I'd just come up since the back feed maybe to try to help answer some of the questions. So while we're talking about this transfer evaluation system, it's one of the softwares that we use to be able to evaluate courses and transfer. And so while we are still working on Workday and what CRM we will use, we still need something currently. And so TESS is the the system that we're currently using. We're asking, can we extend that until we have the Workday functionality that will take care of this? So what President Arthur was talking about, again, was being innovative in the space of AI. This would be, what she's doing is in addition to TESS, we actually have several softwares. We use Transferology that helps us to do course equivalencies. We use TESS, the Transfer Evaluation System. That is our internal piece. I think the project that President Arthur is doing is, again, was a part of an accelerated innovation to be able to talk about the future. And so hers, when she talked about the validation through AI, she's validating against TESS.
Any other questions? Seeing the 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 timing of it, it looked like one was coming due in '28 and the other ones in '31. Is there any reason that it would be beneficial to?
Right. So both, all the College Source contracts, if this is approved, would expire in 2028 with three one-year options to extend to 2031. And that way, if we find out that Workday does support this functionality, we have a way of cutting it earlier than later on the contract, save money.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Is there? It's been moved in second. And we'll go through a roll call vote. Trustee Coles. Trustee Janasik. Trustee Jana Johnson. Trustee Jacqueline Johnson. Vice Chair Mo. The chair votes aye, that one is approved, and we'll move on to the next one.
Okay, thank you. The next one is for the online and remote tutoring currently with tutor.com. There's a request to extend this contract. Back in 2018, Minnesota State did partner with tutor.com to provide system-wide online and remote tutoring services. This solution ensures that there's equitable access to academic support, particularly for online learners and students on campuses with limited in-person tutoring hours. This has been a highly impactful tool for student success and retention, supplementing local resources effectively. The utilization continues to exceed expectations with consistent student satisfaction. And the service has filled a critical after-hours and subject area gap that campuses cannot always staff locally. As students' learning environments evolve, this system must also evaluate emerging models such as AI-enabled tutoring and remote proctoring. So this is a one-year extension, really to ensure the continuity of student academic support through June 30th of 2027. And during this next year, there will be an RFI or a request for information to explore market innovations in this sector. And that would subsequently be followed by a request for proposal to look for future tutoring solutions for for our students on campuses. Without this extension, the service disruption would occur during peak online enrollment cycles. This request is specifically adding to, requesting to add $500,000 to the current authorization, bringing the amount from $5.5 million to $6 million, not to exceed of $6 million. This is funded through the Academic and Student Affairs budget. And that's, yep, and then the rest of the request is is found in the board packet, specific requests.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion? It's been moved in second. We'll go into roll call vote. Trustee Coles.
Aye.
Trustee Janasik. Trustee Jana Johnson. Trustee Jacqueline Johnson. Vice Chair Mo. The chair votes aye, that one is approved. We will now move into the Real Estate Foundation with Winona State.
All right. Chair Hips and trustees, before you today for approval is a motion to accept as a gift nine small parcels of land currently owned by the Winona State University Foundation. The parcels are primarily open green space or parking lots. In total, the parcels contain less, slightly less than one acre with a currently assessed value of about $285,000. Phase one environmental assessments were completed on all the parcels. No adverse environmental conditions were discovered. This action is separate and unrelated to the Foundation Hall lease and operating agreement, which is the next item on the agenda. So we seek your approval for the acceptance of the gift and are available for questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve? Moved as a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. We'll go ahead and move into roll call vote. Trustee Coles. Trustee Janasik. Trustee Jana Johnson. Trustee Jacqueline Johnson. Vice Chair Mo. And the chair votes aye, that one is approved. We'll move into the second, the second one for Winona.
So before you now is the first of two exciting partnership projects, and I'm going to welcome to the table with me President Ken Janz, Vice President for Finance Administration Scott Ellingheisen, and Vice President of Advancement John Olson. So I will introduce this and then let the team talk about their exciting projects. So Winona State University seeks approval to enter into a long-term management lease with the Winona State University Foundation to operate and manage a residence hall, which will be fully financed and owned by the WSU Foundation. The foundation has plans to begin construction of approximately $30 million, 340-bed residence hall on foundation property adjacent to Winona State. And I'll let the campus tell you more about their project.
Thank you. If you go to the next slide, we'll just kick this off. I don't have the clicker. All right. Well, now we went one too far. Well, what we have is the Winona State University Foundation will build a 340-bed resident hall adjacent to the Winona State campus. And in the next map, you'll see that at a cost of $30 million. With that said, since it's a foundation project, I'm going to turn it over to John Olson, our Vice President of Advancement and Executive Director of the Foundation, and he can talk about past partnerships and why we feel this is a great path forward.
Thank you. Thank you, President Janz, Chair Hips, and members. We have had a really good partnership in the past with our East Lake project. This would be a very similar project. The the scope of the building is a little different. It would be more of a recruit-to instead of a retain-type building. This would be mostly for some first-year students. And we would be looking to actually just mirror a lease that we have, a very positive lease that we've had with the university for quite some time. Would you like me to go through the rest of, President Janz?
I just find it that we already have an existing agreement for a residence hall, which is our East Lake Residence Hall already. So this would be another residence hall we're building with the foundation. So that's basically just to have the background there. We go to next slide. John, you can talk about the location because it's.
Very good. The location is marked there in purple on the on the center right of your screen. It's next to, it's just south of our Integrated Wellness Center parking lot. And maybe to go back to what we were talking about before with our sustainability emphasis that we have on the Winona State campus, it doesn't show the. that we have on the Winona State campus, it doesn't show the PV that's covering that parking lot right now, but it's it's there. The two, the the whole building site is highlighted in purple. We are, the foundation is acquiring the two parcels of land on either end of that. We do have the three properties secured, the foundation does, and we are in the appraisal process of the very easternmost parcel and the very westernmost parcel of the building site, which are both university-owned at this time. I, and I'm not going to touch that, so we could, but we could advance. Go ahead.
I think that's our final slide, so, yeah.
I think we do have an image on there also, but that's why I didn't want to touch that. There you go. So it is, so from, so from the, from that same parking lot I was just talking about, this would be the view. It's a beautiful Z-shaped building with both programming in the front of the building and programming in the back of the building, just because of the Z shape. It mirrors a lot of the facilities on campus right now, but it will be set apart by some different architectural designs that we're working with an architect here in the Twin Cities ESG. You can, and this shows, nice, this shows the back programming area with recreational spaces and something that the students call hangout spaces, right? So this would be a space that's programmed just to the north of the railroad tracks. And then the last.
Looks like a really neat project. Congratulations to the to the team for putting it all together. One question I had is the, are any of the financial terms different in this one versus what was what the the existing one is and any?
Chair Hips, no, it's going to be modeled after the Eastlake apartment lease. So we segregate all the funds separate from our traditional revenue fund, residence hall budget. One interesting feature, it was a bullet on the slide, but all of the funds that flow back to the foundation for this project are then returned to the university in the form of scholarships. So it really is sort of a win-win for both entities.
Wonderful, thank you. Questions?
So previously, I suppose, before I was here, the Board of Trustees has looked at data related to need. You did say earlier that your residence halls are over capacity at the moment, so there's that. And then I'm I'm aware of Winona State University's reputation in terms of renewable energy and sustainability, so is the photovoltaic array there part of the sustainable features of this residence hall? Or are there other things that will be a model potentially for other campuses?
So just, we are just to the south of that photovoltaic field, but we have a, don't spread this around, we have a flat roof that some legislators and our, our former legislators don't really like that term, but we have a flat roof that will be ready for PV and our, Scott's Associate Vice President for Facilities has that in mind.
And as to, just to answer the question, we actually need, we have very old residence halls on our campus. We actually need to take 300 beds offline so we can actually start putting air conditioning in our old residence halls. So the idea is we put, we've actually cash flowed it and that's in the thing so we can actually take 300 beds offline so we can go back and start adding air conditioning to all our old residence halls. So by 2035, they'll all be air conditioned, so it's part of our Warrior Shield initiative.
And President Janz, I believe you also took some old residence halls off.
Yes, that was several years ago. The, it was a different part of camp. It was what we called West Campus, it wasn't even connected to our campus.
Any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second? It's been moved and seconded, we'll go ahead and move into roll call vote. Trustee Coles.
Aye.
Trustee Janicek. Trustee Jana Johnson. Trustee Jacqueline Johnson. Vice Chair Mo. And the chair votes aye, that one is approved. And I think we have one more, moving on to Minnesota State Mankato.
All right. Chair Hips and trustees, before you today are two actions related to an exciting development at Minnesota State University Mankato. And with me at the table are President Inch and Vice President of Advancement, Amy Cooney, and I believe Vice President for Finance and Facilities, Anne Gillespie might be online. So this project was presented to the board for information in March, and today Minnesota State University Mankato is back to seek approval to enter into two separate ground leases with the Maverick Real Estate Foundation for the purpose of constructing and operating a sports and community stadium and for constructing and operating a student housing facility. And I'll turn it over to the Mankato team to update you on their project.
Thank you very much, and thank you for listening to our project. And I especially want to thank Vice Chancellor Mackey and Associate Vice Chancellor Swanson for their work with us over the last two years to work through all of the details and make this a, not only a plausible, but a pretty exciting project. I also want to thank my, my, one of my newest colleagues, Vice President for Advancement, Amy Cooney, who went to the society and went, by the way, we're going to launch a campaign. So I think it's going well because it meant that, well, it meant that last month, we were able to start the public phase of the campaign and invite all of our community to begin supporting it and begin participating in what this ultimately is going to look like. I appreciate in particular the opportunity I had last spring to be able to present what the overall design philosophy and what the goals were of this project. And we had a good conversation at that time. To remind you, there are two different leases that are being contemplated here. The first is for a stadium event venue, and the second is for a housing and mixed-use venue, and each have different dynamics to them, which we can get into. So the Southside Campaign, we developed last spring to talk about, you know, why, why do we want to do this? What is our why? Why, why now? The focus of this campaign is on the health and wellness of our community, our students, but also the broader community, a feature that will attract and retain students because it's responsive to the needs that our students are saying that they would like to have, but also provides a diversification of revenue sources beyond simply tuition and state funding with the goal of trying to shield us against some of the changes that happen with state funding and support. The community's interest in this is pretty straightforward. There's a real interest in attracting and retaining workforce to the region. And since we've spent the last few years on working to align our curriculum with where we believe the future needs of the workforce in Southern Minnesota and all of Minnesota are going to be over the next decade, there's a real interest among the community leaders that we keep our talent there to the very best that we can. And it's also part of the strategic plan for the region, which we participate in, called Transforming Tomorrow Together, is to create our region as a talent hub for the region and be able to use the higher educational resources to do that. And as well as to create a destination in Southern Minnesota with a unique facility that doesn't exist anywhere else south of the cities, such as a 12,000-person event venue for concerts and that. Our goal has been to create dynamic partnerships that allow the university to excel and grow and be strong while supporting the region's long-term goals around economic development, community, and entrepreneurship. We saw examples of that yesterday with aviation, I think is a really good case study in what happens when we do that really well. On our campus, things that you've approved over the last couple of years also showcase this. You helped us put together an entirely donor-funded Maverick Innovation Gateway, which is a collaboration of regional businesses and our students and our faculty to do really exciting projects. If you haven't had a chance to see it, it is stunningly good and is working well. But that happens because of the collaboration we have with our region. The second one that you also helped us do was the creation of the Rural Behavioral Health Clinic, which is now seeing almost 100 patients, has filled up in less than six months, they need more space. But that's a good problem to have. We also know that we've run for a couple of years the Bend of the River Concert Series, demonstrating that when you put on large-scale events, we can get, you know, 10, 12, 14,000 people into Mankato with more than 56% of them coming from outside of Southern Minnesota. And operational changes that we've made on the campus, we can demonstrate how we fill hotels and restaurants, which we think this project will do. As I mentioned last spring, our steering committee was broad-based. We had representatives from education across the region, including our school district, District Number 77. We had North Mankato and Mankato city managers as part of this. We've involved our nonprofits. We've involved our for-profit large employers. We've involved our students. And I read to you last spring a statement from the CEO of Taylor Corporation about why it is they're investing significantly in this because they think it will transform the region in important ways and make it a magnet for talent, a magnet for students. Now you're going to see a couple of slides, I'm going to mention a couple of things to you so that you know by the time it gets to Amy. One is I talked to you last time about the need for housing, that we had a study that was recently completed that showed that we needed between 307 and 380 beds that we don't have on campus. That becomes more, a more acute problem when some of our older stock will need to be rotated out just because of its age and ability to maintain it. But the second piece to that, that I didn't know at the time, because it wasn't released until June, is Mankato completed its housing study, saying that by 2035, there will be a shortage of housing, a shortage of housing units in Mankato of about 6,500. Now, we already know that our students are struggling finding high-quality housing as it is. This will further compress what's available to them, and our hope is that we can bring online high-quality housing that will address the needs that our students have, both graduate students and undergraduate students have expressed needs. The second thing you're going to see in the slides, which our people in Advancement cautioned me about, but I'll throw it out there anyway, you're going to see a Ferris wheel. I like Ferris wheels. But, but the concern was, is that just going to send the message that we are carefree, go lucky, we don't care? No, the Ferris wheel's there because our students asked for it to be there. They piloted something this year that was unique for them, and that was for homecoming, they've sponsored a carnival on campus that invited people to come and be part of this very festive atmosphere about homecoming. They would like to do more of that. So when the renderings were done, there's a Ferris wheel. Doesn't mean we have to, it's not a permanent installation, but it is reflective of how the students want to use space a little differently than they can now with the existing facilities we have now. So that's what we're working with. This is what the site looks like right now. It's a beautiful site. There's a, this is just south of Stadium Road. You can see where the stadium is up, up top in the middle. There are three practice fields that are middle left. The reason we have three practice fields is for 50 years, we hosted the Minnesota Vikings. We don't use three fields, but they did, and they're still there. We have a track that doesn't have permanent seating. We have our baseball diamond right below the stadium, and we have the softball field to the left there. What you can't see that's just off-screen to the left are two lit baseball diamonds that get zero use. We're trying to work with youth sports in Mankato to make sure that youth sports that don't have enough spaces know that they can come and be on our fields and we will invite them. Problem is, there's no good access to it. So when I took our steering committee of about 20 people out to the middle of the middle of the middle practice field on a summer day, right after school let out for this, you know, the pre-K through 12, they let out for summer, you would imagine that all these youth sports would be all over that place. One person was out there, it was the guy mowing the lawn. That is wasted space. There's a fitness trail that goes around that gets virtually no use, there's a ropes course, there are two observatories out there. There are fields out there that meet the needs that Mankato has. Now, we can do more now to make them better, we need to make them more accessible. But this project is designed to open up that space for community engagement, community participation, and this became the design around what we call the future state. And the future state for us means how we think a university like ours, tied to, connected with, and in partnership with our region, can make a meaningful difference throughout the area we serve. I'll put it over to Mike.
All right, so, you know, today, our existing stadium, it serves about 10 events, nine if it rains, because then we have to ask our high school partners in the one game they play there to not play there because we have natural grass and we can't let them disturb it for the Saturday game. And we host about 40,000 visitors a year. And so the future state, if I can get the clicker to work, really is designed to be really transformational as you think about hosting 115 additional events and looking at bringing in another 127,000 additional visitors a year. So MSU, we hired a stone planning to do an economic impact study, and they did that in the spring of 2023, we received the results. And, and it was really transformational for us as you think about the ability to bring $94 million of gross spending impact, that's local and non-local spending to our area, to our state and community over a 30-year time period. That's $52 million of non-local spending, that's spending that would not otherwise happen if we don't bring a venue like this online. And that really contributes to about $11 million of state tax, and that's not including state tax or city tax revenue or county tax revenue that can also drive our economy. So we think about this not just as a university project, but we think about this as a community, a region, and a state project. So that's a little bit more about kind of the impact that you'll see.
All right. So a couple of things to pay attention to. One is, you'll note the seating by the track. We'll talk a little bit more about that, but the seating by the track is new permanent seating. For the time that the stadium gets built, football will work in the middle of the track, right? But that permanent seating makes us eligible to host statewide competitions in track and field as well as NCAA national play, or national events. So the first part of this project is community-focused. It's creating a venue where people are able to gather in community and share space. And that comprises everything from farmer's markets, different kinds of competition. Our esports team would like to do large events inside the stadium, to have health and wellness in the mixed-use area, be able to have clinics, be able to have game day experiences, but other event experiences like large-scale concerts. This can seat 12,000 people for large concerts. We've done that on the practice fields, this would be a much nicer venue, and be able to have public-facing clinics to be able to serve a larger community interest with health screenings and similar kinds of outreach around health and wellness. But this becomes a center for the campus health and wellness projects, clinics, and student, student health services. Then for game days, it focuses on doing things that create a celebration on the plaza in the middle with kind of pop-up game day stores, different kinds of events. This will house, this will be able to house Friday Night Lights for our school district and be able to be home for their football teams, as well as rural football teams able to have Thursday Night Lights here, and then being able to use the stadium as a large multi-use platform that can be used for different kinds of sporting events, like it will become the home for our soccer, soccer team, for example, which is doing really well this year. I don't think they've been defeated yet, and they were second place nationally this last year. This gives, this gives them a great home, right? And because they're on a roll. But the, the notion is to make more of a celebratory atmosphere that brings together people around kind of common experiences, whether it be farmer's markets, whether it be concerts, whether it be sporting events, it's designed to be a community center focused on having space to gather. And that's why the large plaza becomes really important for what the students are asking for, but also what our focus groups have challenged us to do is do something that's inviting for everybody in the community. And I should point out, we're now at about 90% pre-design on what these renderings reflect. So these are close to what it will look like. And the pre-design was done after we did lots of focus groups with students, users, community, our residential life people. This represents a lot of work over the summer to get something that the people who are going to be engaged with this are excited about.
So this is just a little different view, but from a stadium and event space perspective, we're looking at about a 6,500-seat stadium. It'll, as President Inch alluded to, have about 12,000 seating capacity for major events. We do have an MOU signed with a major concert promoter who is very excited to move into to this space, but it also opens up premium spaces, like a club space, like suite spaces, like multi-use spaces, so that we can actually engage our community and our campus community in additional flexible spaces that they can have meetings, they can have conferences, they can have esport events, all of those things. The other piece of this project that's not in the, the request, but actually is very synergistic, is it's, it's backing right up to our track and field. And that's allowing us to import permanent seating that we will use to play for one season That we will use to play for one season while we're displaced from Blakeslee. And then we'll be able to actually bid on the high school state track meet, the NCAA Division Two National Championships. Those events can bring thousands and of visitors a year. Just for an example, the state track meet brings 23,800 additional visitors. That's 8,000 students a year experiencing our campus if we were to win that bid. So that's a really exciting opportunities for our community and our university. So that's a little bit about the stadium and event space. I joke that I didn't bring my own clicker and I was very uncomfortable with the situation. Very fortuitous of me. From the mixed use space, you can kind of see. This is really the idea of sort of bringing our students closer to campus. The apartment style on the top floors. That's really a unit style that we don't have in our inventory today. And when you think about our upperclassmen and you think about our graduate students. When they come on campus, we don't have that private housing that they're looking for. So this is an exciting way to sort of include them in the campus community and the fabric of our our university. But we also think about our first floor retail and our commercial clinics. This is an opportunity for us to take our forward facing clinics. And provide the community with that, put to provide our students with high impact learning experiences. Things from sports medicine to our integrated sports psychology or human performance. Our public screening clinics, our dietetics and nutrition. There's really something for a lot of our different areas of learning. There we go. So just to give you a kind of a preview of our timeline, we were in the silent phase. We raised about half of the money for the privately funded stadium portion of this project. So we're anticipating about $60 million for the stadium. Portion that'll be philanthropically driven. And then when you look at the mixed use portion, that'll be funded through nonprofit bonding and other sources with our. Revenue from coming in from the. Different tenants that will be in there. But when you think about this, we just launched our public phase. We will be in the public phase anticipating groundbreaking in fall of 2027. We'll play the last football game of the year there. For those of you, we would invite you all down. It'll be the last time you have to use non winter or. Non winterized facilities. And then come and join us in 2029 when you actually have a warm restroom facilities when it's cold outside. ADA compliance and all the things, but we're really excited to plan to open in fall of 2029.
And the last thing I'll leave you with is. The last thing I'll leave you with is if you want to learn more. If you were to type into your browser, thefuturestate-mankato.com. You will get so much more detail than we've gone into today. But this gives you a flavor and a taste of what the project is about, why we're doing it. And what the outcomes are that we are hopeful for. And we're happy to have any questions.
President Inch, I know as part of, as part of the going public on that. There were some also some announcements made with that with regards to naming and that kind of thing. Do you want to share, share the the ones that were shared that night?
The stadium is going to be called the Becky and Glenn Taylor Community Stadium. Their interest in this is less about football and soccer, although that's important, but about the the opportunities to bring people together. The field is going to be the Taylor Family Field. And that is about what happens on the field. The main gate coming in, the main entry gate is going to be the Thielen Foundation Gate. And then the tailgate entrance, so from the plaza into the stadium is going to be ISG Gate. Others are in process, not done yet.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And then I believe we have two, two motions that are are part of this. Because the the stadium site is a 10 year lease and the mixed use residential is a 30 year lease. Do you want to talk to?
Chair Hipsh, you're correct. There are two motions in front of you. We would amend those to read. They're currently listed as the Mankato. University of Minnesota State Mankato Foundation, and that should read the Maverick Real Estate Foundation. And those are just ground lease, permission to enter into ground leases for the two terms, one for each project.
Questions?
Why 10 and 30 and not 30 30?
So right now, they've been designed to match up with the funding or in the payback of the debt. And so we anticipate, right, we're taking pledges for the stadium over 10 years. We anticipate that we would pay off our debt within 10 years and be able to turn that back over to the university. And from the mixed use student housing perspective, it would be a 30 year term on our financing.
If London can have a Ferris wheel. Mankato should have.
And I would add, we had Ferris wheel designs a week before the St. Paul Saints announced they were putting a Ferris wheel behind theirs, so.
Other questions?
Is there a naming opportunity for the Ferris wheel?
Well, since you ask, if you were to go to the website, there's a QR code and we'd name it after you. But. The Ferris wheel is not seen as a permanent installation. It is designed to meet certain needs at certain times. It's a student driven piece. The goal with the center plaza and originally the center plaza design was much, much smaller. But what the feedback we got from the community and especially from the students is they want open. Very flexible space to be able to do a variety of things, everything from small concerts or spoken word kinds of things. That it's not sometime of just a place to go have a picnic lunch. And so they didn't want any permanent anything in there. But, you know.
This is just sort of a random question, but since we're talking about facilities for housing. And it's a graduate school. And maybe it's a dated term to talk about married student housing. I'm not sure if you use couples housing or or family housing, but. You 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 sort of alluded to it obliquely, but I'm wondering if that's, if that was at any point a part of the planning.
Yes. We have very traditional housing on campus now that's designed for traditional undergraduate students. So single and double rooms, some with collective showers, you know, the large shower, some that have on suites. We do not have, and has been pointed out by our graduate students regularly. We don't have anything that would be appropriate for graduate students. Nor do we have anything that would work with married family housing. Nor do we have anything in the summer that's easily turned into a rentable facility. So for example, if we had short term stays for professionals or short term stays for families, we don't have that. This adds to it, and so it gives us the flexibility of having single rooms. So it's four rooms around two, two bathrooms. And it's and a efficiency kitchen. So it gives us a flexibility to meet different kinds of needs that different kinds of students have.
That's really heartening considering now you're talking about the big, the big crunch for housing in general in this, in the city. And that certainly is a factor in whether people decide to come. So thank you. That's helpful.
Looking at time, I'm going to move us into the to the motion. The first, the first motion is for the stadium ground lease. There was the one amendment, the agreement will be with the Maverick Real Estate Foundation versus what's typed in there. The Minnesota State University Mankato Foundation. My understanding is correct is the the Maverick Real Estate Foundation is a sub entity of the overall.
Correct. It's a supporting organization.
Thank you. Is there a motion? It's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved in second. We'll go ahead and move into roll call. Trustee Coles. Trustee Janice. Trustee Jana Johnson. Trustee Jacqueline Johnson. Vice Chair Mo. And the chair votes aye. That one's approved. Our second one is for the retail housing ground lease. That's a 30 year. And again, this has the same amendment to be the Maverick Real Estate Foundation. It's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved in second. We'll move right into roll call vote. Trustee Coles. Trustee Janice. Trustee Jana Johnson. Trustee Jacqueline Johnson. Vice Chair Mo. And the chair votes aye. That one is approved. Thank you so much. Good luck with the the projects. With that, we are going to take a break for lunch and we will reconvene at 12:30.